Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's public hearing. Before we get started, do you have any cell phones? Please turn them off.
On cue.
There, on cue. Please turn them off. I just turned that one off. If anyone's present or planning on presenting testimonies, please sign in the signup sheet. We've got a signup sheet here. It's Wednesday, June 2nd. The time is 6:10. The time set for our public hearing. All three commissioners are present. Madam Clerk, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we do.
Yes, Mr. Chair. What I'd like to propose tonight, just to make it easier on folks, is we're going to go ahead and, in unfinished business, we will move, number two into position number three. So we're going to switch those. And then, looking at new business, we are going to take Maverick Towers, number five, and move it into the first position. That way, we'll be hearing the two cell tower applications back-to-back, and those who want to testify can both do it a little bit more easily tonight.
So, make sure I've got this correct here. We are moving, in unfinished business, item two.
Moving two to item two-three. So it'll be last on our unfinished business.
Last on the unfinished business.
And then we're moving on the new business, the last Maverick Towers, to position number one.
On the, wait a minute, moving the towers to what?
To position number one. So we'll be hearing the cell tower ones back-to-back.
Okay. I'll second that. Okay. It's been moved and seconded to adjust the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 So the agenda has been adjusted as indicated. So, in the, we'll now take up unfinished business. May I have a motion to remove unfinished business from the table?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'll move to remove unfinished business 202-100-177A, Scott Phillips, from the table.
Okay.
Actually, we just need to move, remove all unfinished business from the table. So just a general motion will be fine.
I will move that we take all unfinished business off the table.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of removing all unfinished business from the table, sanctified by saying aye. All right?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the first item of unfinished business is item 202-100-177A, Scott Phillips. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I will show a little presentation. So this is project number 2021-00177A. It is an appeal of the Director's approval for a temporary living, temporary use, application for temporary living quarters for a family member. This application was tabled from the May 12th hearing due to the sign not being posted. The appellant is Scott Phillips. So this is the vicinity map. The property is on Roundup Street. This is the site, and this is the appellant's location.
What neighborhood is this in?
This is in the southwest. Just Coal Road is to the east, and Victory is to the north. So the appellant had several concerns. He did not believe it was in compliance with the county code. A few of those, he did not provide any documentation supporting the claim for preservation of property rights and the general regulations. Eight dash four L, four L, he's talking about a secondary dwelling. This is not a secondary dwelling. This is a temporary living quarters, which has different regulations. He also talked about an accessory structure. Again, this is a temporary living quarters, which is a temporary use. An accessory structure is more of a garage or a shop area. So those don't really pertain to this application. He also stated that it's not in compliance with their CCNRs. The county does not enforce CCNRs. That's up to the homeowners association. As far as the temporary living quarters, it does comply with the county code for that. So this is what was proposed by the original applicant of the temporary living quarters. He did identify and marked out all of the structures that are going to be demolished or removed from the property. And he has most of those, I believe, done already.
Do we have a better picture than that?
There's, the aerial kind of shows a little bit. There were quite a few structures back in this area, and he has removed those. So this kind of shows some of these structures that were along here, and all of this has been removed. These look like they were trailers that have been removed from the property. So this is what he is proposing. This is the existing house with an attached garage. There is an existing pool, and then this is just their lawn area. They are proposing the temporary living quarters to be located in this location, and it does meet the setbacks for that district. Staff is recommending denial of the appeal and uphold the Director's approval of the temporary use. There are conditions of approval for the temporary living quarters, which means that it cannot be permanently attached to the ground, so it's not on a foundation. And the applicant has not proposed that the structure be on a foundation because it's temporary. It has to be occupied by a family member. It can't be used for rental. The approval is temporary. It's good for two years. In two years, they have to come in and get a zoning certificate. They can have the temporary living quarters and extend it every two years, up to 10 years, and then they would have to reapply, and we'd go through the whole process again. We would notify the neighbors and everything at that point. The temporary living quarters and anchoring devices would have to be removed from the property within 30 days of termination of the use. There are additional conditions, but these were some of the key conditions that we were bringing out. So the recommendation is, we're recommending denial of the appeal and uphold the Director's approval with the conditions of approval. And I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions of staff from commissioners?
Yes. Do we have pictures of the proposed temporary structure?
We do not.
Has staff reviewed pictures of the proposed temporary structure?
Connor, have we seen any pictures of the actual structure?
No, ma'am.
Then how did, who was it? This was a Director's decision, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just wondering, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
How, there's a lot of codes, Ada County Ordinance, that talks about that the mobile home needs to be the same architectural design, the same kind of roof and pitch, I believe. That's what I'm reading in here.
The temporary living quarters does not have to be the same building materials. The secondary dwellings do.
So in the report that we have here, we have, we have information on both, then, it looks like.
The first part of the findings talks about what the appellant is calling out, which it does say for a secondary dwelling, that it has to have the same materials. But a temporary living quarters is a manufactured home, not on a foundation, and it doesn't have the same requirements as a secondary dwelling or as an accessory structure. An accessory structure, if it's over so many scar feet, does have to have the same architectural character.
Okay. So just for the secondary structure, not temporary?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. It's now time for the applicant, Mr. Scott Phillips.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I just wanted to verify and see if the public hearing has been opened for this item.
Well, I think it did, but we'll open it then. Public hearing's open.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just so folks in the room know, and anybody who wants to testify tonight, if you're the applicant, you get 15 minutes. If it's, you're an appellant, and the original applicant could have a five-minute rebuttal, any individual testimony is limited to three minutes. So we appreciate you keeping on track tonight. We have a big agenda, and we want to get out of here before midnight, but we want to make sure we hear everyone. Thanks.
Yes. Go ahead, Scott.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Scott Phillips. I live at 5574 South Roundup Street in unincorporated Ada County. I once heard a wise man say, "Blessed are the brief, for they shall be invited back. I shall use only a fraction of my 15 minutes." Regarding the photos of the subject property, I believe your staff misspoke. In the materials that I submitted with my original opposition to the approval of the temporary use permit and my appeal, there are photographs in the letters that I included. I've got a picture on my cellphone. I can let you see if you'd like.
Is it one of these pictures?
It is.
Yeah. Then we don't need to see it. We'd have to try to admit your cellphone into the record.
I believe it is. This is the, it's a backyard shot from the Allen residence, immediately north of the subject property.
I believe so. Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. I would also like to just add that a 10-year temporary permit is hardly temporary, particularly when you consider the gravity of property values involved in this decision by Development Services. In both the original opposition to temporary use permit for project number 2021-00177A and this appeal, we outlined significant reasons why Mr. and Mrs. Nordgren should not be allowed to place a 40-year-old trailer home in the backyard of their property in a neighborhood that doesn't have other trailer homes in a way that's very inconsistent with the character and nature of the homes in the neighborhood. I believe Development Services incorrectly interpreted and applied county ordinance by approving this temporary use permit. For example, as I understand it, ordinance eight dash four L dash three requires the Director to apply the specific use standards listed in sections eight dash four L dash four and eight dash five dash three when evaluating temporary use applications. The approval of the temporary use permit violated three subsections of Ada County Ordinance eight dash five dash three. Ordinance eight dash five dash three forty, Part Eight, requires architectural compatibility with principal permitted structures. The trailer they've moved to their backyard looks nothing like their home. Their home is lovely, the trailer is worn out.
Can I just pause you for a minute? That was what, the clarification I was just getting from staff, that that is not part of a temporary structure. That only applies to a secondary, not a temporary. Do you realize that's the wrong code?
I apologize, but my understanding of the way the code was read when I read it as just a plain layman was that it would apply to this matter. Additionally, ordinance eight dash five dash three forty, Part A two, limits the footprint of the mobile home to 900 square feet, which the trailer exceeds. And ordinance eight dash five dash three dash one, Part E, requires the roofing and finish materials of the trailer to match the permitted dwelling, which it clearly does not. This was a little disturbing to hear Development Services allege that we offered no proof that the approval of this permit negatively impacts the value of my home and surrounding properties, when in fact, I quoted in my materials I submitted to you two scholarly studies, both of which found that trailer homes installed in neighborhoods of stick-built homes lower the property values of surrounding properties. The first was a study that was published in 2004 entitled "The Impact of Manufactured Housing on Adjacent Residential Property Values: A GAS Approach to Residential Property Values on Three North Carolina Properties." A little closer to home, we offered the study "The Effects of Residential Zoning Density on Housing Prices: Study in Missoula, Montana." That was published in 2001. And in a nutshell, those studies found that when you stick a trailer house in a stick-built neighborhood, it hurts the values of those other homes. And when you do something that in fact increases the density of a neighborhood, it lowers the per-square-foot value of adjacent properties. Even more compelling, I asked that you consider this situation as a prudent investor would, as someone who's going to drop $500,000 or more purchasing a property. All things being equal, you have two options. You can buy a house that overlooks another home with a trailer in its backyard that's 40 years old, dated and worn out, or you can buy a house that has a clean-looking backyard with no trailer. Which are you going to choose? I would suggest that the prudent investor is going to choose the one that does not have the trailer. And that rational investor will discount the value of the less desirable property, the one that has the trailer house in the backyard, when making a purchasing decision. And that's really at the core of my argument for the impacts on our private property values. Ada County Ordinance eight dash one dash two, Part F, prohibits government actions that diminish property values. And eight dash one dash nine, Part A, protects the rights of neighbors to use their own property without facing undue burdens. If you allow this trailer to stay in the Nordgren's backyard, Ada County will be taking money out of my pocket. And I'm very likely to sell my house in the next 10 years, well before their temporary use permit expires. And reducing the value of my property and the properties of my neighbors really does place an undue burden upon everyone in our neighborhood. The last point I'll cover pertains to the deed restrictions that all parcels in Block One of the Sunset West subdivision are encumbered by. And staff seemed to mention that, gee whiz, deed restrictions and CCNRs don't count. Well, they do. And when the Nordgren's bought their home last year, they signed a deed restriction that limited their ability to place a trailer home in their backyard, just like every other property owner in Sunset West subdivision did for Block One. In other words, the bundle of rights that they purchased did not include the right to put a trailer home on their property. To drive home this point, they have no property right in this matter because they didn't purchase that right. So Development Services contends the deed restrictions are of no interest to the county. Well, ordinance eight dash one dash five D, Part Three, does not support their conclusion. This code recognizes deed restrictions. It states, "It is not intended that this title interfere with, abrogate, or null any easements, covenants, or other agreements between parties." For this lawful reason, I argue, since you are aware of these deed restrictions, you must honor them, and you must overturn the decision of Development Services. To do otherwise constitutes interference with lawful covenants, conditions, and restrictions, ones that the Nordgren's promised to fulfill. ones that the Nordgreens promised to follow. So in closing, thank you for this opportunity to appeal Development Services' decision. I ask that you please overturn their action to issue a temporary use permit and to immediately order the Nordgreens to remove the trailer house from their backyard. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. And I'm out of breath.
That's fast.
All right, I thank you.
Chair.
Yes.
Question, can you, how many years or how long has the trailer been there?
The trailer was moved in on January 26th, I was told, and that was prior to the issuance of the temporary use permit or even the application of the temporary use permit. As I understand it, one of our neighbors called Development Services and said, what the heck's going on? These folks are moving a trailer in. And they were still allowed to apply for that permit, although they moved in outside of the legal permissible period.
Okay. And then, can you tell me why you, apparently this goes against your own CCNRs, right? Okay, so why don't you go that route? Or have you tried to go that route?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that will be the next step. The first logical step was to appeal this process. The next step is district court. We have lawful CCNRs or deed restrictions in place. We have not had an active subdivision board in many years. So it would be incumbent upon me and my fellow neighbors to take them to district court to try to stop this action, should you not overturn the permit.
Okay, so you are aware that you have options?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
How, how long does, does your CCNRs, are they unlimited in time, or did they expire at any point in time?
Mr. Chairman, they're perpetual. They follow, they follow the, they follow the land through owners after owners. They never expire.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, Mr. Phillips, before we move on to somebody else?
So in the figure five site photos, shows the front of the house there. It doesn't look like you could see the trailer from that particular street view.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, unfortunately, I can see it from both of my upstairs bedroom windows quite plainly. And additionally, the Allens to the north can see it, and the trailer is visible both from Stirrup on the south and Desert on the north, the main arterials entering our subdivision.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
What's the size of the property in question here?
Roughly .9 acres, Commissioner.
About one acre, okay. And then, one follow-up question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You mentioned the value of your, of your property, and I don't see that report. You said that there was an attachment or an appendix or something. I don't see that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I just received a nice notice from Sessor McQuade, putting my property value just shy of $500,000. I can provide that information if you wish.
What I'm looking for is the testimony you provided tonight, was that this would lower the value of your property? I need proof to take that into consideration tonight. Do you have anything?
Understood, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. In the letter that I submitted an appeal to this, I quoted the studies that I referenced in my document, and provided links to the scholarly articles, information about them. That was included in both my original opposition to the issuance of the temporary use permit, as well as my appeal.
I'm going to ask Diana, can you show me where that is in, in the paperwork that we have, the documents?
While she's looking that up, did, did, did you attend the hearings at the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Excuse me, sir?
Did you attend the hearings at the Planning and Zoning Commission when this item was discussed?
The director's decision.
Oh, the director, okay. All right, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on one second before we get to sit down. I just want to make sure that, that we have any documentation based on your testimony. It's another, okay. Okay, so we, I don't have it here in front of me. Do we have access to it online?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The documents I submitted originally in opposition to the issuance of the temporary use permit were available through the Development Services website. They have an application tracking portal online, and I've reviewed those documents there to confirm that they were indeed submitted into the record.
Okay, that's the, that's the document that you're looking for.
Right, right.
Okay.
Can you, just so we don't have to go through and pull that up, just walk me through that a little bit more in detail on where the analysis came from, and if you remember the, the name and the date and what the analysis stated.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I don't have the names of the study authors in front of me at this moment, but I can tell you, the first study I quoted, "The Impact of Manufactured Housing on Adjacent Residential Property Values: A GIS Approach to Residential Property Values on Three North Carolina Counties," in 2004, looked specifically at the placement of mobile home parks in relation to stick-built structures. And the data, the author's, the author's conclusion of the data was that when you have a residential neighborhood and you plop manufactured homes, or like trailer homes, mobile homes, older ones in the middle of a stick-built neighborhood, it diminishes the property value of those adjacent homes. It did find that the newer, what they call them, parked-style homes, the ones that are designed to look like stick-built structures, do not have those, those negative impacts on properties. But I will point out that the, the trailer house at question here is 40 years old, and it looks dated. It's not a park model, it's not nice.
So one, one further point of clarification, so you stated that that study was 2004?
Correct.
And it was in North Carolina?
Correct.
Do you have anything more recent, and anything in Idaho?
The, the closest I had is a little older, Commissioner. It's from 2001. It was a study out of Missoula, Montana, entitled "The Effects of Residential Zoning Density on Housing Price: A Study of Missoula, Montana." And the crux of that study was that as you increase the density of a neighborhood, the square foot value of properties is diminished. So density increases, values drop. People like and are willing to pay more for a big lot without neighbors right next to them. So tying this back to the, the mobile home, the poor Allens who live north of this property and were party to the original opposition to the temporary use permit, Mr. Allen can't go into his backyard and sit by his fire pit without looking at the sidewall of that trailer anymore.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. That's all.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, I can bring up that letter that he wrote with that information?
No, that's okay. If it's 2004, North Carolina, that's, that's good enough for me, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to the applicant? Okay, yes, sir. State your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Yes, my name's Mike Nordgreen. I'm his neighbor across the street, 5619 South Roundup and stuff. And before I bought this property, I called and checked with the development department to see if a structure could be put back there. They told me yes. Also, before I bought the mobile home, I called to check to see if that was legal, and I also asked on a square footage if that was exterior or living space. And I was told it was living space. The trailer's 14 by 66 feet, which is 924 square feet. The inside is under the 900 square foot they told me I could do. He was right, when it was moved there, the owners of the property had had it moved there, the real estate agent, the seller, to my property. And when a gentleman from the county come out on the call from the next-door neighbor, which was south of me, he said everything was in order, but I do need to get that permit. So I called that day, and I purchased the permit, but it was on the property before I had done that. And I have tried to obey the law each and every step of the way, and the mobile home's just been sitting there. I was told I could like clean out the inside, but as far as doing anything to improve the home, that I couldn't until this was settled here tonight and stuff. So Scott come over and asked if he could put the sign up in my yard. I told him, sure, that was fine and stuff. And he asked me about if I had plans to keep it there. And I had, I had told him, well, eventually I hope that, you know, we can sell it and have a little money where we could, you know, build a permanent structure back there. And he also told me that he was concerned about the value of his home, and I told him I could understand that, but did he know what the neighbor to the south side of me sold his house for? And he says, yeah, almost $700,000. So, and the home was there when he sold it. So it didn't decrease his value at all, and the next-door neighbor and stuff. So, like I said, I've tried to follow your laws and orders and everything, and I will do so in, in the future from whatever you guys decide. I'm not going to tell you, you gotta do this or that or anything else. I want to obey the law and do the right thing. And I'll do that with whatever you decide. Thank you.
Okay.
Can you please stand for questions?
Yes, take a few questions, go ahead.
So what's your name again?
Mike Nordgreen.
Okay, Mike Nordgreen, and you're the original applicant?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay. So is there any other place on this property that you could place the mobile home where it would not be in direct view, and then landscape around it? Is there another option here where it wouldn't?
I could put it on the other side of the property. I know the neighbor that currently brought the south side, south of me, that property for that price, he didn't have a problem with the mobile homes. I could put it on that side, but I'd have to have the movers come back and move it again, pay for that, and then also, you know, they're going to have to...
How do they move it?
With a diesel truck, and pull it and put, it has wheels on it now, so they'd just drive it up and, and over and stuff. There would be a charge, I don't know how much, but to get it leveled and that stuff as required by law, that's going to be another $2,500 for that, for me to do, so.
And then can you tell me who is, who's living in it now, or who do you plan on?
Nobody's living in it right now.
Okay, who do you, who's, who do you plan on living there?
My son.
Okay, your son?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And when will that be?
Well, as soon as we get it fixed up enough, you know, where it's livable.
Okay, so not down the future?
Yes.
More now, okay. I might have another question too.
How long did your son plan to live there?
Well, probably till we die. I mean, it's temporary structure, and like I said, once we get it fixed and he lives there and he was able to save some money, and we can, we're going to try to sell it and then build a permanent structure there. So, but on the property, you know, it'll probably be until we pass.
Okay, is there any questions?
So are you able to raise the fence at all to...
They told me legally the fence could only be six foot high.
You're at six feet right now?
Yes, sir.
That's a legal limit of the fence.
Yeah, because we did ask about that, you know, to try to, try to block it. We've talked about maybe getting some netting to put up or something like that to kind of block the view if I, you know, can get it okayed by the county.
And the, the, the mobile home was there when you bought the house, is that?
No, sir. I bought it after being there, but I inquired it prior to buying the property and prior to buying the mobile home.
I see, so you bought the mobile home specifically for a temporary housing unit?
Yes, sir.
And you were inquired and you determined that it was legal to put the mobile home on that lot?
Well, yes, the county told me it was.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, as a temporary housing unit.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So would it just be your son living there, or the whole family, or what's the plan?
He's a single dad, he has two children, and probably the younger son, the son will live there with him and that and stuff. When he goes to work, we'll get the kids to school and things like that, but he helps with the maintenance of the place and everything too, so.
And does he own one car?
He does, he has actually two. One is not operative right now, it's in the backyard.
So you're, you're planning to have your son live there until you can afford to put a more permanent structure there?
Right, yes, sir.
Okay. Have any questions, then?
No, not for the original applicant, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have additional questions for staff.
Okay.
Diane, can you tell me, on our findings, because I'm, I'm reading the appellant's report, and he states that it's over 900 square feet. Can you explain that to me?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, the 900 square feet is specific for a secondary dwelling. The temporary living quarters can actually be larger than that. There's not a limit on the size of a temporary living quarter. We've had double wides as temporary living quarters before.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for, for you.
Okay.
If it's a temporary living quarter, how long does that temporary living quarter last as a, as an, as an applicable use?
They have to renew every two years, and then after 10 years, they would have to reapply. And the reason we did that in the code is because as people get older, they may live beyond 10 years. We didn't want to restrict them from being able to have the temporary living quarters for a family member in need.
So it needs to be reapplied every two years?
Every 10 years.
10 years, but, but renewed every two years?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Can I say one more thing, please?
Yeah, sure, you can go ahead.
Yes, there is another mobile home in the subdivision as well. It's over on Desert and Saddle. I'm not sure when it was there, but there is one there.
Question to staff?
Okay, go ahead.
Is there anything in the code that would cause you to lose the right to renew after two years, or conditions in there that you could fail to meet where you wouldn't get renewed?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, yes, if you are out of compliance with the conditions of approval, we do not have to renew the zoning certificate, we can pull that.
And what are some of the conditions of approval?
The conditions of approval is that they have to maintain the property in a neat order, that they have to have a family member living in it, that it is temporary, it can't be on a foundation. They do have to renew every two years. If they don't do that, they would have to reapply again. And there are, trying to think of all the conditions. Some of them are just the standard, they would have to get a building permit, they have to comply with all of the standards for the temporary use, for the temporary They can't have it in, located in the front yard, things like that. They have to meet the setbacks for the zoning district that they're in.
Diane, what are the setbacks for this one?
The setbacks, and they are in the R1 district, so it's 25 from the front property line, 10 from the interior sidelines, and 20 from the rear. And the site plan does indicate that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. So if the, if over the next year, the trailer falls into massive disrepair, or the family member chooses not to live there anymore, at the two-year point, we could, a commission could have grounds to not renew?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, actually, if the family member decides they don't want to live there, they have 30 days to remove it from the property.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony before I close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I did want to inquire if you intended to allow the, the appellant to rebut the testimony that's been provided?
Yes, it's our practice to allow the appellant to rebut. If you'd like to rebut anything, Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I am fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will not close the, the public hearing on the item. Is there any discussion from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just for the record, I want to state that I, I do know Mr. Phillips.
Well, for the record, so do I.
I guess you'd need to state whether that would influence your decision-making.
But it's not going to influence my decision.
And it won't influence my decision-making as well.
Thank you, okay. Is there any further discussion on, on this appeal?
Yeah, I think it's our turn to deliberate up here. I think, Mr. Chair, this is a tough one for me. This goes back to showing exactly why we're rewriting our code. After how many years, 30? It's been 30 years. And unfortunately, prior boards did not take the And unfortunately, prior boards did not take the initiative to rewrite it. So here we are, stuck with some pretty antiquated, I think, ideas about how things should be in our communities, especially with the way things are growing and property values, et cetera. I really don't feel like, you know, the 25, 10, 10, and 20-foot setbacks are nearly adequate, but it is what it is right now until it's rewritten. I really do think that there's a possibility that it could lower the value of a property, but unfortunately, I didn't see anything compelling tonight from Mr. Phillips, other than a 2004 North Carolina analysis report. That didn't give me enough information to be able to take into account from a decision making tonight. I do have one concern, though, with the statement that the original applicant made, and he said, "It'll probably be there until I die," which tells me it's not temporary. But then he said that he plans on building a permanent structure, so, and it could be temporary. And then the fact that we have in our code, you know, 10 years is temporary, I don't think in anybody's minds these days a temporary structure should go for 10 years. So again, that's on us rewriting the code. Unfortunately, the way the code reads tonight, Mr. Chair, I'm going to uphold the director's approval of the temporary permit, and I would encourage Mr. Phillips to go the route of his subdivision CCRs, because I think they can get relief through the CCRs, and that's more appropriate decision making, I think, for this board. I don't think we need to go against our own code, and knowing that they're in the process of being rewritten. It's too bad this didn't come a little later in the process, but here we are.
Do we have any other discussion before I call for a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think people have to be able to rely on our code as written, especially when they get guidance from our staff members. And I think, you know, to echo Commissioner Kenyon, there's not a lot of proof that the value of the home will be diminished because of the trailer. In fact, when the neighbors submitted the picture that shows the torn down, a bunch of other tiny little structures in the backyard, and I can imagine those structures were probably not too aesthetically appealing, so overall, this might be an upgrade with all those little structures torn down and the mobile home back there. But obviously, the study from out of state from a decade ago couldn't take into consideration that Boise and Ada County has, you know, been named the hottest real estate market in the country. And I've personally seen lots and houses next to trailer houses sell for above asking price. So the nature of the market is so hot right now, I don't think there's gonna be any substantial loss in property value, especially when, just looking at the picture, it is difficult to see it from the street. So that would be my... That would be my thoughts on it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before we make a motion, I know it's closed, so I can't ask our staff this question, but I'm really curious too about the water, the well and the septic. So I would just encourage the owner of the property to make sure to check your drinking well water in this area. There's been high levels of uranium and nitrates in different wells, and so I would make sure...
It's city water.
It's city water? Okay, so you hooked up to city and same septic, perfect then. Okay, thank you. All right, I'm ready to make a motion unless you've got comments.
No, I'll accept the motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to deny application 20211... Or 100177A and uphold the director's decision based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report and the testimony here tonight.
Is there a second to the motion?
Mr. Chair, I will second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to deny the appeal of 202100177A. Mr. Scott Phillips? All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you.
Okay. Now... We are moving on to...
Number... What was number three?
What was number three? Trade wins. I will now open the public hearing on application number 202100631-ac-v. We'll hear from staff, and then we'll take testimony.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, project number 202100631-v-ac is a variance to grant relief from a development standard to allow for an accessory structure in the front yard to exceed 1,500 square feet and for an accessory structure to exceed the maximum allowed maximum height of 24 feet by 3 feet and 6 inches. Also a variance for the structures on the property to exceed the maximum lot coverage of 5%. In addition, an accessory use application to construct an approximately 1,872-square-foot accessory structure. The property is located at 4941 North Meander Place in Section 29 Township of 5 North Range 1 East, and the property consists of 5.01 acres. So on the rare portion of the property, or the west part of the property, we have the principal permitted dwelling, and then on the east side of the property, the northeast corner of the property, we have an outbuilding. And the outbuilding that's shown on the map here will be removed, and then the new accessory structure would be built in that location. In order to construct the 1,872-square-foot accessory structure to store the property owners' RVs, the applicant will need to get approval of three variances. The variances are for relief of two development standards associated with accessory structures and a variance for a development standard associated with the rural residential district. The first variance is for the standard that requires accessory structures in the front yard to not exceed 50% of the square footage of the principal permitted dwelling or 1,500 square feet, whichever is less. The second variance is for the standard that limits the maximum height of accessory structures to be 24 feet. And the third variance is for the standard that limits lot coverage on properties in the rural residential district to 5%. The variance is needed... The variance for the accessory structure greater than 1,500 square feet in the front yard is needed because the subject property consists of steep slopes. And on the map here, you can kinda see where the steep slopes are. So the areas that have kinda the yellow and the beige and then that white color, those are areas where the slope is greater than 15%. You can kinda see, kind of, really the fly areas is typically where the primary dwelling is on the western portion of the property. And then we have kind of a fly area towards the front of the property where the applicant is proposing to construct that new accessory structure. The request for the height variance is to keep the building elevation in perspective. In reviewing the accessory use application, staff noticed that the maximum lot coverage for the property will be exceeded with the addition of the new accessory structure. The maximum lot coverage in the rural residential district is 5%. The subject property consists of 5.01 acres. Thus, the maximum footprint of structures that can be on the property is 10,911.78 square feet. According to the Ada County Assessor's Office records, the footprints of the existing structures that will remain on the property include a single-family dwelling that is 6,954 square feet, and this would be the, basically, the footprint of the structure. So the attached garage, which is 1,220 square feet, 26 square feet, a pool, which is 1,700 square feet, a covered deck, which is 192 square feet. Therefore, the total square footage of the footprint of existing structures remaining on the property is 10,072 square feet. And then the addition of the new accessory structure is... Would be 11,944 square feet, which exceeds the allowable footprint of 10,911.78 square feet. In order to grant a variance, the three... There's three findings that would need to be made. The first finding is the variance should not grant a special right of privilege that is not otherwise allowed in the base district. The second finding is the variance relieves undue hardship due to characteristics of the site. The third variance... The third finding is the variance should not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. Staff finds that the variance to grant relief from the development standard to allow an accessory structure in the front yard to exceed 1,500 square feet is justified due to the topography of the property, specifically the steep slopes behind the dwelling, which prohibits building the structure in the rear yard behind the dwelling. However, staff finds that the variance for the accessory structure to exceed the maximum height of 24 feet and the variance for the structures on the property to exceed the maximum lot coverage of 5% is not justified because these variances do not relieve an undue hardship due to characteristics of the site. There is no written testimony from any neighboring property owners regarding this application, and then other agencies that responded to this application did not express any concerns regarding the approval of the variances. Staff finds that the application does not comply with the Ada County Code and recommends denial to the board, and I'll stand for any questions.
Is there any questions from the commission?
No, thank you, Brett.
Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions, Commissioner? I would have a question or two. What would the applicant need to do to comply with the code?
So basically, what the applicant would need to do, so for the first... So basically, with the three variances, the first variance, from my analysis, there really isn't a way for him to really comply with the code because just of the steep slopes behind the property. So basically, the house is basically built on top of a hill, and so we have kind of, you know, obviously, slopes going in front of the house and slopes going behind the house. There's really no place in the rare portion of the property to really build another accessory structure to store their RVs. For the other two variances, the... For the second variance, he would have to reduce the height of the structure by, I think it's 3 feet 6 inches, so that the height of the structure doesn't exceed 24 feet. And then he would need to reduce the square footage for the third variance, he would need to reduce the square footage of the third variance to, I think it's about 800 and some change, square feet, to comply with the maximum lot coverage of 5%.
So, Mr. Chair, just for clarification, I get the last two, so they'd have to go back to the maximum height of 24 feet?
Yes.
They'd have to go... So they'd have to get rid of that three extra, 3 feet 6 inches? And then they would have to limit it to 800 square feet?
I don't know the exact... I'd have to do the math, but the... It's around 800 and some change in terms of being able to meet that square footage, so I'd have to do the math and...
So, Brett, so I'm assuming you've had these conversations with the applicant?
I believe I did, yes. So it was... The applicant did receive the staff report and copy of the findings of fact.
Okay, so they're aware of the limitations?
Yes.
And they wanted to try to get them changed?
So I did let them know, and that's why they applied for the height variance, where they were aware of the height variance, and then they also brought four to their attention. And that was the reason why we had to table the meeting from May, was to address the issue of the exceeding the 5% lot coverage.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
What's the square footage they're proposing right now? It is 1,872 square feet. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other... Anything else you have to add?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other questions from commissioners?
Not right now, I'll reserve possibly later.
Is there testimony? Additional testimony? Is the applicant here to testify? Okay, yeah, go ahead. Come on up, sir. State your name.
Commissioners?
Yes.
My name is Ted Martinez. I live at 1713 East Garden Brook Drive, Eagle, Idaho. And I'm here to represent Dr. Dean Harrison and the request he has for building this structure.
Okay.
Right now, the existing structure is 12,000... Or, excuse me, 1,296 square feet. It is existing on the property as is. I agree with Mr. Danielson that you can't put that structure anywhere but where it's at, and we intend to, if it's approved, to demolish the existing structure and put a new one that will be more in tune and match the exterior of the home itself. So it'll improve... It'll actually improve what's there now. I believe that you have pictures of what is there, and I actually have some pictures that I would like to hand out to you too, if I can.
Sure.
But just show a few things that I have.
Thank you.
So this is related to the height and to several of the things, but picture number one is a road view of the existing barn that's now, if you were to drive past it. It sits anywhere from 10 to 12 feet below the road right now. So you can see that little white that's on it, that is the barn now. And I think that the pictures that you have show a view from the driveway going up to his house, which you can see the whole thing, but that is obviously the driveway. And I think those are pictures, actually, that were presented to you from staff. Picture number two is just below the home itself. It's probably, I would guess, 1,000 yards from where he is now. And so you can see the outbuilding that's there, and there's actually two outbuildings that are there, and I'm... Excuse me, I'm assuming that they exceed 1,500 square feet. Number three is actually just 100 yards south of his home now, and those are outbuildings that you can see in that picture. So there are several outbuildings, and obviously, they would exceed the limit. Number four is another one that is just... That's below him, probably a quarter of a mile away.
So just for clarification, Mr. Chair, so you're showing us other people's properties?
I'm showing other people's properties due to the fact that they exceed what we're talking about right now.
Okay, thank you.
That's the reason I wanted to show these.
There's no addresses on these, though, so I don't...
And I'm sorry, I just actually went out there and took those today so that we'd have them for a night. Number five is about a mile southeast of that house, and number six is probably two miles away, and number seven is... That's an outbuilding with a living quarters above it, which I'm sure exceed the 1,500 square feet. And it's in the county. It's north of Beacon Light on Linder. So I wanted to show those pictures simply because what we're asking for seems to comply with what is already existing out there, even though the code, and Mr. Danielson is right, it states exactly what he says. As far as the height restriction on it, we are asking for a variance on the height restriction simply because Dr. Harrison is an avid athlete, and he works out a lot, and he's trying to do a partial gym in part of this, and he wants to put in, which he has at this time in storage, a 24-foot rock climbing wall. And the reason to get the extra 3 feet, 24 feet, obviously, is what it needs to be on the inside of the building to get that climbing wall installed, but he needs that extra 3 feet or 3 and 1/2 feet, obviously, to get a pitch on the roof to drain... Drain water off. So anyway, that's kind of the reason for the height. And lot coverage... And lot coverage, again, the building that's, the existing building on it now exceeds that 800 square feet that Mr. Danielson had talked about. And so our, our proposal is to, and obviously, ours would be another 600 feet larger than what's there now. But we feel that it's not undue to have that, especially in the location is where it's not really visible from most anyplace other than a couple of houses that are off to the, above it, a ways above it. So there hasn't been anyone that has disagreed or came, that came to the neighborhood meeting, and I don't know that there's anyone here that is, would testify against it. But that's, in a nutshell, what we're asking for.
Okay. How large is the lot that this is going to be put on?
It's 5.2 acres.
5.2 acres.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are the, all the, all the properties in that surrounding neighborhood, you showed us all these pictures, are they typically on acre or five, up to five acres?
They, they range from five acres to two acres.
Okay. And the structure that you're proposing here, this is it right here in the back page?
Yeah, it is. And that's very preliminary. We, we actually had a full-blown one at one time, and we've scaled that, we've scaled that way back. So this was just a preliminary drawing that we had to try to show some size to it, basically.
I see. Well, and, and how far is, is this prop, this new structure? What's on the site right now? Is that where the owner's home is? He lives on the, on the side?
The owner's home is up, is on a hill above it. And the, right now, there's already a barn or shed on that, excuse me, and that shed is actually 1,296 square feet.
That's the shed that's there?
The shed that's existing, yes.
I see. Excuse me. Okay. And how large is, is this, this structure you're proposing to build?
It's 1,872 square feet.
Eighteen, okay.
It's about 500 square feet, or 600 square feet, I guess, larger than what's there now.
So you're gonna take one down?
We're gonna take one down, yes.
You're gonna demolish the one that's there, the...
Yeah, we're not asking to add an additional structure, we're actually asking to, to tear the one that's down now and rebuild the other one.
And rebuild it with this?
Yes.
Okay, any, any other questions from Commissioner?
Can you go three feet down?
I would like to.
Is that legal? Or is that just two burns on them?
Yeah, well, I think that, that due to the fact that, you know, part of it is for his RV, obviously, to be able to park it in, inside, is that, I think that that wouldn't be reasonable to do, obviously.
Okay, I have any other questions right now? All right, well, do you have anything else you'd like to add to us, Mr. Martinez?
No, I think that, that's all I have to say.
Well, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to provide any testimony on this project, the, this application? Okay, if not, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, before you close the public hearing, I just want to enter in the pictures from Mr. Martinez, and these would be exhibit number 37.
37, okay.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else before I close the public hearing? If not, I will close the public hearing on this application. Is there discussion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll kick it off. Sounds like a wonderful project, but this is an easy one for me. Over the last two years, we've had quite a few of these come before us. And the, the onus on the board is to really say, does this really relieve an undue hardship? And I fail to see where Mr. Martinez really proved that it was relieving some undue hardship. I don't think a climbing gym and, and a 24-foot roof for an RV is going to, I think it adds a special rider privilege. So I'm gonna, from my end, be denying this because I do think that it would be giving this particular applicant a special rider privilege, and it does not relieve an undue hardship.
Do you have any other comments?
Well, I mean, to me, it, it almost seems like a no-brainer to grant it, other than the code. I mean, it, it seems like a pretty basic thing. It looks like it's in character with the neighborhood. It would be an upgrade to the property, it's a large property. The only question is, is it legal? That's my only stumbling block, so. Just question to staff, why, I mean, has it always been 800, or, sorry, can you go over again what the, the allowable square footage is under our code and what that's based on?
So basically, the, the lot coverage is based upon the base district that the property's in. So with certain base districts, we have a certain percentage where the footprint of structures can exceed a percentage of the lot area. So basically, with the footprint, basically, that's basically the portion of the structure that's, you know, cover, covering the ground. So the roof covers that portion of the ground. And so in the RR District, which is what the property is zoned, it's, you're limited to 5%. So basically, what that means is 5% of the land area, you know, cannot, cannot be covered, you know, no more than 5% of the land area can be covered by buildings, essentially, is what the lot coverage entails. And so with this app, proposed application, basically, you know, he would be exceeding the, the lot coverage by roughly 1,000, you know, square feet, is, is what would, what the proposed building would be exceeding the lot coverage.
And does that take into consideration that they're demolishing, or they're planning to demolish the existing accessory structure?
That does. So it looks like, from my calculations, it looks like with the current structures on the property, it looks like they are currently over lot coverage currently with what they have already to date. So it looks like they're over lot coverage by about 400 square feet. So somehow, in the past, you know, we, you know, when the permits were issued for the house and the pool, and it doesn't look like we caught that, the lot coverage, you know, when the house was originally built, or when the pool was originally built. So it looks like we're over, based on, on the assessor's office information, it looks like we're over lot coverage by about 400 square feet currently.
Did, when he built it, did that predate our zoning code?
It did not, no. So the house was built, I think in the early 2000s, if I'm not mistaken, and then the outbuilding was on the property prior to the house being built.
So would that be grandfathered in? The accessory dwelling right now?
So I think the existing accessory structure, I think that would be, be grandfathered in. So I think that structure was approved as agricultural structure because it was built prior to 2000. And so prior to 2000, with agricultural structures, we didn't require, agricultural structures by themselves don't require building permits. And prior to 2000, we didn't require agricultural structures to obtain a zoning certificate. So currently today, with an agricultural structure, we require the, the property owner to obtain a zoning certificate so that we can make sure that the agricultural structure meets the setback requirements for the base district it's in. And then we would also catch things like lot coverage. So obviously, because this agricultural structure was built prior to 2000, that might be part of the, the reasoning of why the property might be over lot coverage today because we didn't, we, obviously, that structure was already on the property prior to the house being built.
Could that existing structure be remodeled into a gym, or would that violate the code?
That's a good question. So I believe, and I might have to console with, with, with our director, Richard Beck, on this one. Obviously, for them to use the structure as a gym, the agricultural structure as a gym, that, basically, they would have to get, obtain a building permit to convert the structure from an agricultural classification to an accessory use application, because an accessory structure requires a, a building permit. So to convert the agricultural structure to an accessory structure, that's gonna require a building permit. Typically, when we have a building permit, we're going to look for things such as setbacks and, and lot coverage. And maybe, Richard can maybe, I don't know if we could possibly do it, would this be an expansion of a non-conforming use, Richard, or...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, we obviously have to take a look at the, the specific facts and see what would, what would be applicable in this case, as Brett's saluting there. There would be, we would have to apply the current standards, accessory use and building permit standards, if it was approved as an agricultural structure. There's different standards that will be required to convert that to something else. So it may, in turn, bring up the same, at least for lot coverage, I don't know about the height, but it may bring up the exact same challenges that we're faced with in this current application.
So could we go, just quickly go over the three variances again, and the reason for denial of each three?
So basically, with the...
Sorry, go ahead.
With the three variances, so basically, the first variance was for the accessory structure over 1,500 square feet to be in the front yard. Staff's analysis of that one would be that would, in, in terms of, staff was able to, to make positive findings through that variance because of the topography on the property. So when you, you look at the, the hill, the part, the property, basically, the existing single-family homes on top of the hill, and basically, you have a steep drop-off from the back of the house. And so that kind of precludes building an accessory structure in the, in the rear yard of the property. So the most logical place to build an accessory structure on the property would be kind of in that proposed location where we have that, the yard that's flat, that's in the front yard. The other two variances are, are the ones that staff, you know, has, has had, in their, my analysis, I had a harder time recommending approval for because I didn't really see it really, typically with a variance, you're looking to, to have it relieve an undue hardship. So I didn't, with the other two variances, which would be the height variance, and then the lot coverage variance, I didn't see this application rela-, undoing an undue hardship for those two. So I only saw the undue hardship with the first variance, which would allow for the accessory structure to be in the front yard. I didn't see it with the other two variances, that undue hardship being by physical characteristics of the site.
So undue hardship is the legal standard we have to make a decision based on?
Yeah, and then the other one, the other finding is, it should not grant a special rider privilege, would be the other standard that you'd have to look at as well.
Okay, thank you.
What's the rationale of the 5% lot coverage?
I think the rationale for the 5% lot coverage is, in the rural residential district, typically, those properties are going to be kind of rural in nature, or, or they'll also have small agriculture, scale agricultural uses on them. And so part of that is, is to maintain kind of that rural aesthetic. And so with a 5% lot coverage, typically, people in the rural residential district, they like to have some open space around them. And so that's more than likely why we have a 5% lot coverage, is to kind of have most of the property kind of be more natural area, rather than have it be covered with structures.
Is there further discussion from the board? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and start, based on what I mentioned before, and I do think this goes right back to the code. I think we're rewriting the code right now, and if this board is finding in front of us some of these existing codes, to be, to, you know, have too many constraints on it, it's a really good time to, to weigh in as we rewrite it. But based on what we have before us this evening, and, and what we have in our code, I move to, unfortunately, have to deny this application to 02100631 VAC, as the applicant failed to show that it relieved an undue hardship, and I believe if we did approve it, it would grant a special rider privilege.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, first, for the record, let me say, I am familiar with Mr. Martinez, but I don't feel that will impact my judgment in this case.
We know everybody here tonight.
I, I will, I will second that. It's, I, I don't like having to second that because I think morally, you have every right to build that structure on, on that land, and it's not out of character, based on the, the pictures you've shown us, where a lot of the neighbors have larger structures. I don't think, so therefore, I don't think it would necessarily confer a special right because it seems like everybody in the neighborhood has a, a larger building. But to echo Commissioner Kenyon, I didn't hear anything related to undue hardship, and I think it's probably a stretch to say that it would cause undue hardship not to allow an extra couple feet up top, or the extra square footage. So with that, unfortunately, I will second the motion.
All right, we have a motion to, before us, to deny the, the application. I might add that I, I do think that I'm glad we are redoing our code because I think this is one of those sections of the code where you should be able to build that building there, it's five acres, for heaven's sakes. And we're, we're becoming a more urban area anyway, and I would recommend to Mr. Martinez to work with our staff and get that code changed, so you could do what you want to do there.
And we are taking input.
We are taking input because we're, we're redoing our code, and I think this is one of those instances where our code is wrong. But we're not supposed to grant special privileges, and so therefore, I'll call for the vote. I'll in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Now, we are taking up number three?
Number two now, the cell.
Yeah, number two. That is number, now, number three.
Number three, yeah.
Yeah, okay. We'll now take up application 201800280-CU-TU.
Did you open the public hearing?
Not yet. I'll open the public hearing on that application. We'll first hear from the staff.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, at the May 12, '21 public hearing, the board had directed staff to further investigate the proposed Linder Road overpass and the potential impacts it may have on the subject property. In talking with our community regional planner, Brent Moore, and Chrissy Inselman at the A-County Highway District, I was able to find out the following information regarding the proposed Linder Road overpass. So Volde Road overpass project is a joint project between the A-County Highway District and the Idaho Transportation Department. The A-County Highway District has not yet designed the project, as they're waiting for the Idaho Transportation Department to add this project to their transportation improvement program. According to the A-County Highway District, they have not yet set a design year for the overpass. Therefore, a timeline has not been set of, of when the overpass will be built. A baggage road would likely be a part of the project design for those properties that would be, whose access and fringe would be impacted by the proposed overpass over the interstate. And I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions from the board?
So Brett, when did you, I'm sorry, when did you say, this isn't even in their five-year plan?
It is not, no.
Okay, so the concerns that we had before about access and whatnot aren't even coming into play, at least in the near future?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from the board of staff? Okay. We'll then take testimony. Is there anyone wishing to offer testimony on this extension? Is there anyone wishing to offer testimony on this extension? Okay, go ahead, if you can state your name for the record.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thanks for your time tonight. My name's Andy Cockle, 1815 North 11th Street Boise, representing Maverick Towers. I don't have anything to add from the May 12 meeting, and I concur with staff's recommendation for approval. The overpass was the main issue from the last hearing. It is not an issue. I think the only thing I could add is that when it is, if they need to eminent domain the entire parcel at that point, I don't see that happening. You know, we could address it at that time, but we would look for your approval here tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Yes, could you give us one more time why you needed two-year extension?
So when we originally applied for the approval of the conditional use permit, we had a carrier sprint at the time that was interested in co-locating on the structure. Shortly after the approval, they announced the merger with T-Mobile, and then they went through almost a two-and-a-half-year regulatory approval process through the federal government. That delayed, obviously, the building of the tower. Since then, we also had the pandemic, which has slowed development down as well, the carriers. We've been talking to T-Mobile as well as the other carriers. There's still a need for this location. They've allocated some of the resources to different technologies, but we do think eventually this will be built, and with the growth out in Kuna, this is a high, you know, growth area, and this tower will be needed at some point. So if it's not extended here today, you most likely will see applications for additional towers in the area here sometime in the near future. So I'm thinking probably sometime first or second quarter next year, but it could go a little bit longer. There's a lot of moving parts as far as regulations, the carriers' budgets, and other things that come into play to make everything come together to get one of these towers erected. So with that, I can answer any additional questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So Andy, you just stated that there is still a need, even with other towers going up in the meantime, additional?
There's no other towers in this particular location. There's been a lot of growth directly around it. That's why we targeted this particular site to begin with. The closest tower is to the southwest by about a mile and a half, and then there's another tower to the northwest about a mile and a half. The spacing in areas out in this area, when I first started up in this, in the Idaho area, we're probably about three miles apart. As we see growth growing, they're coming down to a mile and a half, and if you get down toward demographics and the density is getting very high, then we're down to almost half a mile. And then they come behind that, and they're infilling now with the small cell 5G, which you've seen, I'm sure, around downtown area on streetlights and traffic lights and utility poles and stuff like that. So it's a densification of the network. The macro sites go hand-in-hand with the 5G sites, which are the small cells. We have fiber connectivity to all those, and you're basically seeing broad coverage and then adding capacity to that coverage through different technologies. And as we see the growth we're seeing here in the valley, you're going to see more and more applications for all sorts of things wireless.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, are there any other questions? Are you also representing on item number five, which we moved to item number one?
Yes, I am.
I don't have any questions at the moment. Yeah, because what we have in our discussion now is 201-800-280-CU-TU. Correct? Yeah. Okay, is there any, thank you.
Yes, Chair.
Is there anyone wishing to offer public testimony on this issue? Yes, sir. Can you state your name for the record?
Sure. Hank Allen, on behalf of Idahoans for Safe Technology, 687 West Rush Court, Eagle, Idaho. I have a copy of my testimony on a webpage. I know it would be easier for you guys if I can display it through the computer, or I could just read through my testimony. I don't know if you guys have copies that I submitted earlier.
Well, if you'd like to submit it for the record, you can do that, but you can read it to us if you'd like as well.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and read it, and I can also, I've also submitted copies for public testimony. Okay, "On behalf of Idahoans for Safe Technology Foundation, we are requesting that Aida County Commissioners deny the below, or this conditional use application based on the following information. It's simply not needed. Tower's not needed."
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Hank Allen.
Okay, just so you're clear tonight, that we're not ruling on a application for conditional use, we're ruling on just the time extension. So your testimony should just be regarding the time extension, not the original?
Yeah, so if the tower's not needed, then no time extension should be granted. Thank you. So in the testimony that I've submitted, I have coverage maps from the three leading wireless carriers. One is Verizon, and they have plenty of coverage in that area for basic telecommunications services. The second is for, let's see, this is T-Mobile, and there's a coverage map here, and they have plenty of coverage in that area. And the third coverage map is for AT&amp;T, and they also have plenty of coverage, and strong coverage in this area of the proposed cell tower. Maybe asking, most people do, when they, when we talk about placement of cell towers and how you may think that the Telecommunications Act 1996 ties your hands as to whether you can or cannot regulate the placement of these towers. So in my testimony here, I actually have hyperlinks and the general information from the Telecommunications Act. And I'll read it to you real quick. This is 47 USC 32A 7A from the Telecommunications Act. General authority, except as provided in this paragraph, nothing in this act shall limit or affect the authority of a state or local government, that is you, or instrumentally thereof, over decisions regarding placement, construction, modification of personal wireless facilities. So that means you, the local government, shall have authority on the placement, construction, modification of these towers. The regulations of the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities by any state or local government shall not prohibit functional equivalent services, personal wireless, or personal wireless services. State and local government shall act on any request for placement, construction, modification of pro- Shit. Okay. So I also have David DeHosse, who's on WebEx, and he's going to finish up going through this, and I can continue when we go to the next item.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you, thank you. Do we have anybody else in the audience before we go to WebEx? Nope, okay. Do you have somebody in the audience on WebEx that wants to our telephone or whatever?
Yes, David DeHosse.
Okay. Okay, David, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. It's all yours.
Excellent. Oh, fantastic. Okay, first of all, this tower, you know, you have the right, as the county commissioners, when there is no gap in coverage, to deny a tower. As Hank pointed out earlier, the map showed that there's no gap in coverage. Had there been a gap in coverage, I'm sure that the wireless carriers would have probably pushed this tower forward. So first of all, there also needs to be a propagation study. A propagation study is a, basically a means test. If, and it would show by a third-party independent study, if there was a gap in coverage, then you could actually provide a tower. That's clearly in the law. But there's not been anywhere in the reports of this application, so for that, you should simply deny this. Number two, where is the insurance coverage for health effects for this tower? There are none. What you're basically granting here is you're granting, basically, someone to go out and put up the equivalent of a building without defining its use, and have a person come back later and say, oh, we're going to use this for nuclear waste. That's what you're doing here. You have no parameters on this tower, just they're going to put a tower up, and sometimes they're going to come in with different types of towers, 5G or 4G. There's no definition, there's no specifications of equipment, there's no amount of power or limits on power for this, and there's simply no gap in coverage. That's why you should deny extending this conditional use permit. Thank you.
Okay, is there any questions for Mr. DeHosse?
No.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
David, are you talking about, okay, did you look at the original application when they, that they submitted to build, or are you just referring to this current one to extend time?
So I'm looking at what your staff had on the website.
Okay, I guess my question was, in their original application, if they had filed anything like a propagation study or coverage map? Can you speak to that?
Well, I haven't seen anybody in this valley do a proper propagation study yet, so I doubt if there's ever one. Every tower I've looked at in this valley, it's been, there's not been a proper propagation study, period. So I don't know if there was one back then, but I doubt it. But again, it's not attached to your information on the website, so I can't answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Commissioner? I have a question. You said you looked at what was on the Development Services website. This is not an application for a tower that has already gone through. This is an application to merely extend their time to build the tower. You knew that, didn't you?
Right. But there's no need for the tower, so why extend it? There's obviously, there's no gap in coverage. You haven't even followed the, the previous county commissioners, obviously didn't follow the proper rules because there's no, there's no propagation study, they didn't follow the FCC rules even.
Okay.
So if they were, if there was a demand for it, wouldn't that tower have been built by now? And then secondly, where are the specifications for what's going to go on this tower? You, as a county, you're there to protect our interests, all the surrounding property owners. This is a radiative power that's going out significantly, could be a very high amount of power, but you don't know, you don't know the specifications. You're like building a building in downtown Boise and saying, hey, you know what, here's a picture of a building, we're going to build someday, but here's, we're not going to tell you how much rebar we're going to put in the concrete, we're not going to tell you what type of electricity we're going to put in it, we're not going to tell you what the specification of any of the building is, how much, how many parking spots and so forth. This is just an empty building that you're, or in this case, a tower for some future use, which you don't have control of. And for that, for the protection of the safety of the citizens in this valley, you need to deny this.
Okay. Anything else?
I think their time's up.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Dave, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wish to offer testimony on the issue before us?
Can I rebut?
Yes, you'll get a chance to rebut when, when everybody else has had a chance to offer testimony.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, has anybody online or anybody in the room that would like to offer testimony? I have a number of names here. Do you have anybody online?
There are people signed up for the next application.
For the?
The owing cell tower that you'll hear about.
But these are the only ones for, for this one?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right, yes, sir, if you'd like five minutes to rebut, you're welcome to do that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. I don't know Hank or David personally, I have heard them at other hearings. They're obviously very passionate about what they believe in. I've been in the wireless industry for almost 25 years. I don't think I would have been successful in that industry if I was pursuing towers that weren't needed. I just would be out of business. And so to answer some of their questions, yes, there was a propagation study done at the original conditional use permit hearing. It was provided, it was done by a licensed radio engineering firm out of California called MobileNet, used them on all my projects because I don't want to be pursuing locations where a tower's not needed. I also do get input from the carriers themselves. They are telling me that this location is needed, and they will be interested in it in the near future as soon as they sort out their post-merger and funding and stuff like that. So as far as insurance on the towers, I'm not even quite sure. I insure all my towers, and the carriers insure all of their towers for all sorts of requirements, liability, fire, equipment, you name it. Heavily insured, it's a high cost of doing business in this industry. The equipment, I own the tower, and I provide electricity, and I provide fiber to the site. The carriers come in, like an anchor antenna will come in, and they'll provide all the detailed information on the equipment that they want to install on my tower, and then they have to go through administrative review for co-location, and then they have to go through an extensive building permit process where they provide all the detailed information of what type of equipment, how many antennas, how many radios, shelters, and they also have to provide all the propagation studies as well as to the RF emissions. They are heavily regulated by the Federal Communications Commissions, they have to abide by all of the radio frequency exposure levels. If they didn't, they would not be in business, they would be in jeopardy of losing their licenses as well. So this issue regarding health has been discussed for 25 years. The reason it hasn't been revisited is because I keep finding the same thing. I'm not a radio engineer or a physician, but I'm following the regulations of the Federal Communications Commissions, which says this technology is safe. So that's kind of my two cents on that. Again, there's a lot of different moving parts that have to come together to develop one of these towers. It's at the local level, the state level, and the federal level, and I have to have a willing landlord, I have to find zoning that permits this use, which I did, and then I have to go jump through a bunch of regulatory hurdles like NEPA and SHIPPO. We have to notify every Indian tribe that has been here or says they've been here, and then we have to go through a bunch of other different hoops before we can finally put this together and apply for a building permit, and the actual construction of the tower is the easiest part of the entire process. So getting all those local regulations, the state regulations, the federal regulations, the carriers onboard takes time, and sometimes there's pauses in this development process, but eventually this is needed. They say they've got coverage maps, they pulled those off the carriers' websites, and if you're in the business of selling cell phones, you're going to show coverage maps or provide, it looks like there's coverage, but what they're not taking into consideration is the capacity behind the coverage. There might be coverage, but it's only to a certain degree, and when you have multiple devices and cell phones and all the new technology, one cell tower can only handle so much traffic. And so that cell tower gets maxed out, and so you have to have supplement towers closer and closer together and densification of the network to make this work. And so they might see coverage on a map, but again, it only handles so much traffic. I've been putting towers immediately adjacent to existing towers just to handle the capacity that this new technology, and all these connected devices that everybody's using on a daily basis, you know, that maxes out this system. So with that, I do believe they're passionate about what they believe, I'm not quite sure what their intentions are, but I would not be in the business of putting up or chasing down cell towers that aren't needed. So hoping to answer any questions you guys might have.
Yes, did, MobileNet is the propagation study company that did your propagation study?
Yes, I believe it was MobileNet at that time. I was using a different RF engineering firm, but I believe it was MobileNet at that time.
Has MobileNet ever done a propagation study where they found that there was not a requirement for?
All the time. I submit sites to them based on information I receive from carriers, and I look at development in the area, and I say, what about this location? And I don't just go chase down a site, I put it in front of them. They analyze using radio frequency analysis, sometimes we even do drive tests, but a lot of times it's very apparent with the online tools and the information they have to say, yes, this is a good location, or no, it's not.
Okay, well, that's the question I had, because I know sometimes people that are hired to do studies, they do the studies.
Well, when I did this study, there was, there was the one tower, two towers to the southwest, and the only additional tower that's been erected was a mile and a half to the northwest. And so the spacing in this area and the growth in the area is, requires, you know, more.
And the whole reason for the delay was the, was the joining of two companies?
Yes, it was almost, it was over a two-year regulatory approval process to the federal government.
Because of the regulatory approval process, what would be your timeframe now, do you think? Now that's regular- Now that's regulatory hurdles are overcome?
I'm always ready to go as fast as possible, but again, I have a lot of different moving parts and pieces that have to come together. I would hope to have it built next year.
Okay. Are there other questions?
So what was the date of the original propagation study?
I believe it was probably in around February of 2018.
So how do you know that it hasn't become obsolete in the last two years plus?
Just based on the growth and the introduction of no new towers in the immediate area. And I've talked to my radio engineers. I go back to them all the time and say, hey, it was just still ago. Should I go spend my money to come down and talk to you to get a time extension, based on what they're telling me and that the carriers are telling me that this is a location that they're going to want?
And as far as your insurance goes, does that cover any health, potential health consequences as a result of the towers?
No, it does not. Again, the carriers that locate on my towers are responsible for the radio frequency emissions that they emit, and they're heavily regulated and monitored by the Federal Communications Commission. And they have to abide by the standards that that commission has set for exposure to humans.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions?
No, thanks. Fine, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I will now close the public hearing.
Chairman, before you do that, do you want to enter the email that Mr. Aaron had submitted this afternoon as a lay exhibit?
Yes, we're going to enter that as an exhibit. Do we have any other exhibits we need to enter?
I don't believe so. I think that's the only one. So this would be exhibit number 24?
Okay, we'll enter that as an exhibit. The public hearing is now closed. Are there discussions from the commission?
Mr. Chair, we've got some questions for staff. So since this is an application for?
Ryan, we closed the public hearing, so have to reopen it then?
Oh, you can't talk to staff after?
No, we'll have to reopen the public hearing if you want.
I'd move to reopen the public hearing.
Okay, we can do that. You want to ask some questions? We'll open the public hearing again for questions. Go ahead.
Okay. So the question is, since this is an application for time extension, what grounds would the county have to deny in this circumstance?
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, you would have to show, I'm trying, that's a good question. You would have to show kind of why, you know, so basically, it's up to the applicant to provide rationale of why they need that additional time. So if the applicant didn't provide, you know, rationale of why the additional time was needed, then that, then the board would then have the ability to deny, you know, the time extension.
And also regards to the propagation study, can the county, since it's been over two years since the last study, can the county require an additional study that's more current?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, there is a provision with the time extension that the board, at their discretion, can add additional conditions that weren't conditions in the initial approval. So if you wanted to add that as a condition of approval, you would, you definitely would have the discretion to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other questions of staff?
I don't think so.
Before we close the public hearing?
Why don't we go ahead and close?
All right, we'll close the public hearing on this issue. And now it's a discussion of the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I'll kick it off. This is a tough one. I really empathize with the folks here testifying tonight about their concerns. About a year and a half ago, previous board, we denied a cell tower for a lot of what we felt were legitimate reasons. We actually had to go to court on that, and we lost. And we thought we had pretty solid grounds on those decisions. And what we found out is that Telecommunications Act of 1997 is really restrictive on what local governments can and can't do regarding placement, construction, modification of these. So I personally felt like my hands were tied, and a cellphone tower was approved to go into the middle of a neighborhood, residential neighborhood. So I have a problem with this, but I also totally understand that they have a legal right now to put the tower in, and this is just merely a time extension that we're looking at here tonight. But I would encourage the folks here that are part of that association, where you need to take this fight is really to our legislators. This 1997 Telecommunications Act is dated, and it needs to be updated, and it needs to be done on the federal level. So I would encourage you to do that. But tonight, I'm going to be inclined, Mr. Chair, to approve a one-year time extension with a condition of approval, that if they don't finish it in one year, they have to come back with an updated propagation study. So it'd be a limited approval with the condition.
Okay. Is that a motion?
I could make it into a motion.
Unless there's more discussion, is there more discussion?
Well, I do think possibly an updated propagation study would be in order. But, and I think we're going to have a little bit more of a, maybe a more robust discussion on the next item, since it's a new tower coming in. But I think I would agree to the additional condition of if it's not built within a year, an additional study would be required.
I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion. I move to approve application number 201800280-CU-TE to approve a one-year time extension. And at the end of the one year, if that, if it isn't built, then before they can come before this board again for an additional one-year time extension for that two-year extension, maximum two-year extension, that they would need to bring to the board a updated, what's it called, study?
Propagation study.
Propagation study, updated propagation study.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve a one-year extension with the provision that if there's no building within the one-year period, that a propagation study would be required to receive another extension. Is that?
Yeah, that's correct. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before you vote on that motion, I wonder if it would make sense to also table this?
For the revised findings of fact?
For revised findings, to allow Brent to reflect these changes you've made for the one-year time extension, the propagation request. If that would be acceptable?
Okay. Then based on the recommendations of the board tonight, I move to table application number 201800280-CU-TE, the one-level time extension and propagation, updated propagation study to, what's the date?
July 14th would be the next public hearing.
To July 14th, 2021, for revised findings of fact and conclusions of law.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenny, we could also select either an open business meeting, or even the Development Services Staff Meeting on June 14th.
Richard, is this just not to prepare findings of fact and conclusions, and we could do that at an open business meeting?
Yeah, let's do that. So the June 14th, that's sooner.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenny, that is our Development Services Staff Meeting. And also, as an open business meeting would be sufficient as well.
Okay, so I'll revise my motion and change it from July 14th to June 14th, 2021.
Thank you. Do we have a second to that motion? Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to table the application until such time as our staff can prepare findings of fact and conclusions of law, till June 14th. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Moving along. See, that's how we change the, that's the old business. Now we're getting to some new business, correct?
New business.
Now we're getting to new business. Now you, did we move item number five to number one in new business? Okay. We're taking up now item 201800626-CU-TE, Maverick Cell Towers. And that is a, one more time, that's a board-level time extension for the conditional use permit. I will now open the public hearing on that issue. And I'll offer the staff to give us a report.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, project number 201800626-CU-TE is a board-level time extension for conditional use to construct a 110-foot-tall commercial cell tower and antenna structure with lease areas. The property is located at 1099 and 1/2 East Steer Flat Road in Section 24 Township 2 North, Range 1 West, and consists of approximately 0.716 acres. There is a residential subdivision to the north of the property, a dairy to the south and the west of the property, and a shopping center to the east of the property. This is the applicant's first board-granted time extension. If the board were to approve, the time extension could be given until June 7th, 2023. The time extension is needed because for the past several years, wireless carriers have been involved in mergers or allocating building funds to other areas of the industry, such as 5G service and small cell service. A number of neighboring property owners have provided letters and emails opposing the time extension and the cell tower. Staff finds out the application complies, that the time extension complies with a county code, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions from the commission?
At this time.
Any questions, Commissioner?
So is this subject to the same conditions we discussed on the first one?
It is, yes. So the, what, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Davidson, with the time extension, the board has at their discretion the ability to add additional conditions of approval if they feel that is necessary.
Okay. Thank you. We'll hear from, if the applicant would like to present some evidence, testimony.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Without completely repeating everything I just said, this is, this is a very similar situation to the last site. We've had, I believe it's four sites total that fell into the same category that we needed time extensions on. Two of them were approved without any problems, I guess, because there was no opposition. But now that there's opposition, it seems like we're putting restrictions and stuff on future timeframe to when these things can get developed. To just go back real quick on the propagation maps, they do reflect very basic coverage in the area. They don't reflect the capacity issue that this industry is facing. You can't show capacity issues on a propagation map. So requesting a new propagation map, it could show pretty good coverage, but again, it's the amount of devices that everyone's using wirelessly to connect to this infrastructure that's maxing out the infrastructure. So I can show you maps all day long, but again, it's not going to reflect the sheer capacity that everyone is consuming. So a tower can only accommodate so much. That's why you're seeing these 5G small cell densification of this network to allow for all this new technology, driverless cars, medical devices, connectivity of the Internet of Things. Everything is talking to each other, and it's all going through this network. So I just wanted to clarify the propagation studies and what they mean at this day and age in our industry. And one of the things that I like to say or tell people is that the carriers are reactive to problems for coverage. There's sometimes behind the mark, there's a big development that will go in, and then they show up and they try to get these towers approved, and they usually face lots of opposition because people are already there. So I'm a little more proactive, and I go into areas where I see development coming, and I get these towers approved in anticipation of what's going to be needed there. And also talking to the carriers that say, yes, we like this area, it's going to be somewhere we're going to need to provide coverage down the road. So it's a little proactive in going into places before you're seeing a ton of growth and a ton of people show up. And I know you're going to hear here tonight that there's a lot of people that have moved in after this tower was approved, but there's, that's the whole reason for the need for this tower. And they could have easily done some due diligence and looked around and questioned the zoning of the surrounding properties and done some homework on, hey, what is possibly going to go in around me? And I think most buyers of real estate are usually pretty prudent about looking around and saying, what could my future neighbors be? Could it be a cell tower? Could it be some other use that I don't particularly agree with, but is needed? Everyone uses wireless technology, it's not going away. This is the infrastructure that makes it work. People don't like it, but it is what it is. It's just like power, it's just like cable, it's just like natural gas. It's used in every one of our lives on a daily basis, and it's just going to expand and get bigger and bigger. So with that said, I'd be more happy to answer any other questions you guys might have tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Not at this time, thank you.
Any questions?
So what was the date of the last study you did on this tower?
This was 2018 as well. Yeah, somewhere, I believe it's right around June.
And so you do population studies as well?
Yeah, we do demographic studies. We look at all new housing counts, we look at commercial development, we look at schools, we look at just growth in general. And then we accommodate these macro sites, along with other technologies, small cells, fiber, you know, to the home is great. People will say, hey, there's fiber here, I don't need wireless connectivity, but not everyone can afford to have Wi-Fi or can afford to connect to fiber. I mean, for a lot of people, their cellphone is their sole connection to the wireless network. It costs them 40 bucks a month, that's a lot of money for some people. So to exclude the people that use their phone primarily as their only source of everything, and say, hey, we can just connect to our Wi-Fi or fiber is kind of a, it's not fair. And it's excluding a lot of people that only have a cellphone. So we use fiber to connect the tower to the network. So those other options are out there, but I think for the majority of people, you know, wireless is the way they go on a regular basis. And it's not going to change.
I do have another question. So one of the things that this board a couple of years ago tried to get the carriers to do, and probably didn't go anywhere, but we were really interested in having a strategic plan for the valley and for the growth. And so where should these be going? And so you weren't coming before us randomly in different residential areas and whatnot. Is that impossible to do? Or has that been done anywhere else, where this is more of a strategic, thoughtful, purposeful industry that, you know, that thinks ahead and puts things all in the right place at the right time? Or is it so competitive that you're just all out fighting for the right location?
Well, it's very competitive, obviously, on the carrier level, as well as on the tower ownership level. You have huge corporations that own hundreds of thousands of towers. You have mid-sized companies like myself and regional tower players, they're all competing for the same locations. But a collective response to trying to be proactive to growth, I think, is very difficult in that environment. And, you know, I think just overall, when you're at the carrier level trying to cover the entire world, basically, you have to allocate your resources to certain locations at certain times. And so when one carrier might be saying Boise, Idaho is the place we need to be right now, the other three might be spending their money elsewhere. So that's kind of the delay in a lot of what we're seeing here on these particular towers tonight. I mean, would they like to cover it all at once? Great. Right now, the federal government's allocating a ton of money to wireless broadband, so you're going to see, I think, more of a collective effort from the state levels to try to provide this technology to some of the underserved areas.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? I have a question. How much does a propagation study cost?
I believe somewhere around $300.
$300.
It depends on what you're trying to do. If you're using online tools and the resources they can do from, you know, remotely, but then if you have to get into the actual drive testing, they would actually send people physically out to the location with radio equipment and monitor, you know, each licensed fire. out to the location with radio equipment and monitor, you know, each licensed frequency, each carrier, and you can get into, you know, the thousands of dollars depending on how much time it takes.
So the typical propagation study that you get is $300, is that what you say?
Yes, it's basically using online tools and using studies they've had previously and looking at databases, and they can calculate if there's a general need. A lot of it, though, is based on growth. I mean, it's based on, yeah, it's tower spacing, is it three miles, is it a mile and a half? Did you just have 1,000 homes built and a new school and a hospital? Then, yeah, you're going to need a new tower.
And your business model is you find locations where there's not a lot of people yet, you sort of try to project growth, is that the idea?
Yes, and I usually don't come into this board or planning and zoning until I have an interested customer or carrier come in and say, yes, we want to go there. And so then I'll approach for a conditional use permit or whatever the regulatory body requires at that time. But I am, I do speculate, I do have a lot of sites that I've chased down that just aren't needed, and they go away. But, you know, I'm just trying to follow the growth, I'm trying to follow the technology and the need, using the resources that I have at my disposal.
Was this subdivision right straight across the street, Whitetail and Buck Drive? Was that there when you first made your application?
No, it was not.
So it was vacant field, in other words?
Yeah, I believe they were getting ready to start grading at that time. I was looking at a photo, actually, I think I have it back, let me see, an aerial photo from that time, and they were just getting ready to start grading the farmland across the street. The shopping center was under construction.
That's the one on North Sailor? Across the street, on the other side of the street?
Which direction?
Oh, I don't know.
So to the north is the new neighborhood where most people you hear from tonight are objecting. The Buy Mart was under construction immediately to the east, the shopping center to the east and to the south slightly. There's a big cattle ranch right directly adjacent to the property that I'm on, and then you have the high school to the west in downtown Kuna.
Okay, so the high school's just to the west of this town?
Yes.
How far west is it?
I believe it's about half a mile, maybe a little bit closer.
Well, it's familiar with that cattle yard there, I've been out there.
Yeah, and I'm sure, from what I've heard, that guy's going to eventually sell and that will all be developed into something else. Yes, it's a very high-growth area out there right now.
Okay. Is there any other questions of the applicant from the commission?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Are you going to be putting the little 5G towers on the cell tower?
Mr. Davidson, no. I don't handle the equipment, the carriers do. I own the vertical structure and the lease area around it. And then the carriers decide what equipment they want to install on the tower and on the ground adjacent to it to meet whatever technology needs they have at that time.
Is it common in the industry to put the little 5G towers on existing cellphone towers?
Well, they'll add antennas if they want to add 5G technology to that particular location. I've seen a couple upgrades in the recent past from carriers doing that. That's where most of the resources are being spent right now are not on new tower construction, they're on upgrade of existing facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Any else?
Thank you, thank you. Do we have anyone in the room wishing to testify on this application? Yes.
Hank Allen, Idahoans for Safe Technology, 687 West Rush Court. So again, we are requesting that you deny this application because there's no need. And after listening to the applicant, let me talk about need. So when we talk about need, he, the carriers obviously say, hey, we want to sell more data, we want to sell more cellphones and more coverage and fatten our pockets. So we need more antennas and more towers to go in so that we can provide this service and make more money. Now, the need that I'm referring to is what is required from you folks and us as a city and a town, what is required by the FCC, and that's basic telecommunications services. That means making a phone call on a cellphone to call 911, to call your mom, to talk on the phone, or to send a text, period. That's what's required under Title II of the Telecommunications Act, basic telecommunications services. Now, remember the Mozilla versus FCC unregulated, the unregulated, the broadband, wireless broadband internet about two years ago? That's Title I. That's when we start moving into the heavy broadband data that they're requesting, and they need more space so that they can deliver the broadband portion, which is 5G or the 4G portion of their services. That is unregulated. FCC does not regulate it, it's up to you folks to regulate it, and there's no need for that because currently we have broadband-wired networks in our community. We have fiber optics, DSL, and coaxial cable internet that is much faster than any 5G wireless service, it's safe. We don't need this, right? So there is no need. And I know the carriers will try to make you think that, yes, here's a propagation study, and we're going to prove to you that it's needed, but it's needed for them, it's not needed for us, and the FCC doesn't require us to put it in, right? And then to follow up, I was a part of the, that cell tower you mentioned a year and a half ago. The cell tower was just turned on two months ago. I've been in AFib five times and hospitalized as soon as the cell tower went on, within three days of that. I also have a large beehive in my backyard, and within about a week of the cell tower going on, all of my bees in my backyard have died, okay? So there's obviously, despite what they say and the regulations by the FCC, there is damage happening to people, me, for one, from that cell tower that was, that went in. And I'm being assaulted every day, I cannot go in my backyard, I have cattle that I have to rotate, I can't even go in my backyard without being assaulted by this RF radiation coming from the tower. It's too powerful, right? So this is not needed, it's not required. I think I'm out of time. Thank you so much for hearing me, Commissioners.
Could you answer a question or two?
Absolutely, go for it.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
So you don't live near this particular one?
Not this particular one, but likewise, for this particular tower, I went through the cell carrier's website, and I looked at the coverage, and they are currently providing basic telecommunications services in these locations.
So you wouldn't oppose anything if that's all that was being provided was basic cellphone service, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, absolutely. If there was a need for it, for basic services, and there wasn't on there, then absolutely the tower should go in. But I think, as the Commissioner pointed out, there should be a larger plan that we look at with our current wireless code to say, how could we do this safely and put these cell towers further out into the country that can go long distances and come up with an overall plan that makes sense that's safer for our communities?
And I think that's correct, I think we do need a broader approach to this, but we just heard testimony that we don't know if a 5G is going to be there or not.
That's the problem. As we found out with the cell tower that the Commissioner mentioned earlier in Eagle, what happens is we have the first public hearing where you guys look at just the tower, that's just the structure, we're looking to make sure the thing's not going to fall over, wind's not going to blow it over, but then after the tower's erected, then comes a permit application for the antennas. And the antennas now, they can put whatever they want on there as long as it meets the FCC guidelines, right, for RF emissions, and it's way too high. The emissions that are being transmitted right now on the tower that was just installed makes me sick and throws me in the hospital, right? So you guys don't get to look at that because it's a deferred symbol that comes in later. So right now, to make a decision on this particular tower, you're unarmed, you don't have enough information to know if this thing is going to be safe or how it's going to affect people that are close by to the tower because of the antenna information and the power outputs is not in this package.
Okay, any questions, Frank?
So the tower that's close to you, are you saying that they put an antenna on there that's 5G? And I'm still not totally clear on what, just a regular cell tower emits versus a 5G tower, and is your contention is the 5G that's affecting you or just the intensity of what's coming out of the cellphone tower?
Well, it's, one, I don't know the frequencies, two, it's the intensity of the radiation that's coming off of it. And in the close proximity to myself, it's that. And I actually put in a request, a demand before the tower went up, that I do know my land radiated. And prior to the tower going in, I took readings at my house, and I had zero RF radiation in my house because I live in the country, and I'm on a two-acre lot, and I was two miles from the nearest cell tower, and that's one of the big criteria that I looked at in buying my property, is its proximity to cell towers and the fact that I was safe, right? I'm protected as a disabled person through the ADA, and I have also put in a reasonable accommodation request for this particular cell tower because the radiation is too much, right? So there are consequences to approving these things, and you guys don't have enough information. I'm sorry, did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Is there any other questions for?
Not for you.
Okay, so again, please deny this application. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you. Are there others that wish to testify on this application? In the room or on the phone?
I have David DeHos online.
Okay. All right, can you hear me?
We can hear you. All right, so there's been a couple of things brought up that I think brings clarity. Like Hank mentioned, there's two titles, Title II and Title I. Title II is for basic cellphone coverage, 8.02 watts of power to get a text message in a cellphone call. Some of these towers are putting out up to 96,000 watts of power. The problem is, is you as county commissioners have the ability to regulate this properly. Title I is for broadband data. Broadband data is being able to download your Netflix on this phone or get other data. As Hank mentioned, we've got cable, we've got fiber optics. Other smart communities like Ammon Idaho and now Mountain Home have decided to go with fiber optics to their homes. They did an LID and they wired fiber optics to everyone's home, that's what they're doing. Ammon's already done it. That is safe, that's more secure. These towers being, well, these towers are a little different, but you don't have, you don't have any control, once you allow the approval of this tower, of what they're going to put on it. Right now, you don't have any control of that, that's why denying this would be better and then coming back with getting control, getting control of your ordinance, getting control of your rules. Look, as private property owners, we have the right to the safe enjoyment of our homes. Hank just showed you, he can't have his, he's been infringed upon. It would be like you allowing a rendering plant to go next to my home, right? There's pollution coming from these towers. I have a radio show, and I've interviewed the people from the Environmental Health Trust. Look, this is next to a school. The worst place to put it is where these kids are getting radiated, and they've shown this in over 16,000 studies of what this does to children's brains. You're right next to Kuna High School. So then back to the insurance, he says, we got liability insurance, yes, but I know you can't get insurance for the health effects, and who does that fall back on to? So when Hank, if Hank decided to, okay, I'm injured, I'm going to sue, well, guess what? It's going to come back to the taxpayers of the county, and so now the taxpayers are vulnerable. And Verizon states this in their 10K report, it says, look, we are at risk, we are at risk because we cannot buy insurance for health effects. So guess who's going to get stuck with that bill? And we're just beginning to see the damages. I've gotten calls almost every week where these towers are going up and saying, David, my son's got brain fog, I've got tingling in my arms, what do I do? And what I tell them, well, you're going to have to move because the cities or the counties are not properly taking control of what they have. You have the ability to control this, you have this in your hands to control this properly. This is broadband data, you don't know what's going to go up on these towers. He just said, I don't know. They put a 5G tower, then they put 4G, they put basic telecommunications for cellphone coverage only. You don't know, but you need to know that, no different than if you built a building. What's going in that building? What is going to cause the neighbors? Is that going to infringe upon the neighbors' privacy rights and the private property rights for the safe enjoyment of their streets? Other, Connecticut put a moratorium on their cellphone, on their 5G towers, so has Big Island Hawaii and other places effectively. Other countries have outlawed it completely. We have the ability here in our valley to protect our private property rights, and you as the Commissioners have that duty to do that. So the propagation map, okay, a map from some, a long distance is fruitless, you need to have a drive test, a means test with a third-party independent study where they take the meter and they take the phone and they show a gap in coverage. As, it sounds like that has not been done here. Again, this needs to be done, this needs to be in the code, and this needs to be done so we protect the citizens.
Thank you, David. Is there any questions for Mr. DeHos?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Any questions, Commissioner? No questions, thank you very much, David. Is there anyone else, either online or in the room, that wants to testify?
We have Shelley Vale Peterson online.
Okay, Shelley, can you hear us? Hello, Shelley, can you hear us?
If you can hear us, we can't hear you. There she is. Make sure you're unmuted.
Can you hear us, Shelley? We can't hear you, could you?
No.
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 Do we have a...
An IT guy?
No, I think it's on her, and she's talking there, but we can't hear.
Are there others that are online?
Are there others that are online that we can...
Why don't we move to someone else and then you can...
Move to someone else, maybe Shelley can get her phone working. Who else is online?
Just one moment.
This is when you need that music.
Jeopardy music?
Yeah, Jeopardy.
Okay, Jessica, are you online? Can you hear us? Okay, Jessica, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you, Jessica. Could you...
Uh...
Go ahead.
...body with cover with...
We can hear you.
Three minutes.
You got three minutes.
Okay, I, this is just on one right now, but, do you need to see me?
No, we can hear you.
Okay, you can hear me, okay. So it was kind of confusing as to, you know, if you should be in person there or do it over WebEx or whatnot, but essentially, I, I do, I need to add, okay. I'm sure that you've guys received the letter from the Sterling Ranch neighbors.
Can you speak into your microphone? You're breaking up.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
So I would like to, you know, further add in this application that my daughter, my mother, and I moved to Sterling Ranch, Holman Homes. over home and homes, mostly based on the premise that it was not in close to a power. We asked if any towers were in works. The correct answer, yes, it is uncertain to the market. No, we would have purchased. Lack of health standards, lack of safety standards, unpleasing aesthetics, and potential home value depreciation factor into our result. These towers suddenly appear very close to. Close to comfort. Good points. Sterling Ranch community HOA. Usually, most of the things be approved by them before proceeding. This would violate the standards on which this was built. People and their property should allow said people to. Please deny Maverick Towers extension, please. Give us that.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for? Stephanie, is that her?
Jessica.
Jessica, do we have any questions for Jessica?
No, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to let her know that I read her email. Even though I couldn't hear a lot of what she was saying tonight, I think we have it on the record clearly. Thank you.
Okay, do we have others?
Yes, we do have Shelley Peterson, and I believe she was able to call in.
Okay. Shelley, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Go ahead, Shelley.
My name is Shelley. My name is Shelley Vale-Petersen. I live across the street from where the proposed tower is slated to go in. I do not want the extension granted, as I do not feel the need is justified for this tower. I live, my house will be within 1,000 feet of the proposed tower. On April 21st, Brent Moore stated in his letter to Ada County Development Services that the cell tower will be an accessory to the existing homes located on the site, and is proposed in order to improve wireless services to surrounding residents. For the past two years, I've been a resident in the neighborhood closest to where the tower is proposed. I can attest to the fact that I and my neighbors have adequate cell and internet services. For the past two years, I can conduct weekly international web and cell video meetings via web, via WhatsApp, Zoom, Skype, and secure video without a problem. Currently, there is 110-foot cell tower located within two miles of the proposed site. I understand 4G towers have a range of about 10 miles, which we, as the surrounding residents, obviously are within that range. I do not feel an additional 4G or 5G tower is justified due to the fact that we have no problems with our current wireless. I would like to see the studies done that justify the need for the new tower. I feel the tower will destroy the aesthetics of our neighborhood, as we will be unable to escape its hovering presence over our homes. Besides ruining the natural beauty of our community, it is also my understanding that these towers generate a lot of heat. If this proposed tower is 5G, it generates a lot more heat than 4G towers. To prevent fire hazards, 5G towers are commonly installed with cooling fans that may run 24/7. I believe that the 4 decibel level from these fans is too high. The continuous sound noise could easily become an intrusion to part of our soundscape. I would like you to take all this into consideration and deny the extension of the time, the time extension. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for?
No.
Is there others on the phone?
I do not have anyone else.
Is there anyone else in the room? Okay, would you like to offer a rebuttal, sir?
Was, Mr. Chair, was the last witness the one who tried to get on, but we couldn't hear?
I don't, okay. So she did get on, then, okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
We obviously have people that are opposed to this and don't agree with the regulatory, the federal regulatory body that oversees the health and safety of these installations. I haven't seen any evidence on their end other than claiming their studies that this is harmful. Again, I've been doing this 25 years. I've been following this pretty closely. I've been deferring to the people that regulate this and that the carriers abide by the regulations. You know, I'll just, I'm not going to address all of the issues that were brought up one by one. I've been doing this a long time. I wouldn't be pursuing this location if I didn't believe that there was a need down the road. I would be out of business if that's how I created my business model. So this tower was approved prior to the majority of the people in the area being there. They could have looked into it if they did some due diligence and know that there's a tower proposed or approved for across the street from where they're living. You know, currently, there's 1.8 devices per wireless consumer worldwide. We're going to see that go to 5.4 connected devices per consumer in the next three to five years. That's what's driving the development of all of this infrastructure. And it all goes hand in hand. You can't have one without the other. You need the macro towers, you need the small cell, you need the fiber, you need satellites, you need it all. And that's just being driven by the sheer demand for the bandwidth and the devices and the technology that everyone uses on a daily basis. So with that said, I'm seeking your approval for a time extension here tonight, and I would be happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
No, thank you.
Any questions, Commissioner?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, Brent, you have to.
Mr. Chairman, just before you close the public hearing, we'd want to enter, so Mr. Allen had submitted an email to you guys this afternoon. We just want to have that as into the record for Exhibit Number 35.
Okay, we'll add that to the record, Exhibit Number 35. Do we have any other questions of staff before we close the public hearing?
No.
Did you give him that look?
With that, we will close the public hearing and have a discussion with the board. Is there any discussion for the board?
Well, maybe I'll start off this time. I am, you know, really not, well, first of all, for the record, let me disclose that I did know a couple of the witnesses, David and Hank, and that it won't affect my decision today. That being said, I am really not confident in the county's legal position at this exact date and time. I've heard conflicting legal theories from both our county attorneys, from the witnesses here today, and from some other sources. So I, also, the, it's not common knowledge, but there is a 5G working group that is comprised of members of most of the cities in the county across Treasure Valley. And they are sort of working to find a legal framework, potential zoning solutions to the new, you know, 5G towers that are soon going to be, you know, filling up the county. And I think for that reason, I still feel like I need time to truly understand the county's legal position, what we are and what we aren't able to do, especially considering, you know, some of the testimony here today. So I am going to move that we table this for six months and revisit it at that time, which I think hopefully the 5G committee will have completed its work. And I think I'd like to revisit it at that time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I was thinking along the same lines as Commissioner Davidson. I think in this particular case, there's no immediate need for basic services. That's been, we've heard testimony here tonight that clearly there's enough bandwidth right now for the needs of the folks that live there. And I understand the business model. But I do think that this is an industry that is growing so quickly that we really need to understand the difference between our legal obligation to provide basic needs, basic services, versus constant demand for higher speed, for higher connections, faster connections, that purely is entertainment. And I think that there's got to be at some point an ability for us to weigh in on that. And I would like also for our legal team to be able to spend some time doing more research and seeing where we're at in addition to working with the 5G working group and putting their attorneys on it. I think since we're not relying on federal government to do anything too quickly, I think as local government officials, we need to make sure we're providing basic services, emergency services, but also that we understand any and all effects. So I would support that six months with the direction of our legal staff to continue to do some research on this as further directed by the board.
Is that a motion?
I'm going to go ahead and make the motion, and I'll second it.
Yeah, let me just say, my goal obviously is to avoid lawsuits for the county. And so I think, you know, being prudent, we'd rather get to the bottom of this before a tower is built and the investment is put out. Because again, we don't want to hamper your business in any way that we don't feel is prudent. But I think, all things considered, tabling for six months would be in order. So I will move that item number 201-800-626-CU-TE, Maverick Towers be tabled for a six-month period.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm going to check in with staff to make sure that we're not running in or running up against any timelines or anything that we're not unaware of.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ken, that is a good question that we're kind of trying to take a look at to see if there's any specific time limit that would require the board to take action on an application.
I remember in the last lawsuit, the one we had, that there were some strict timelines.
And Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, maybe it would be prudent to table it for a month. Allow us to take a look at that aspect as well. If we do table it for six months, we don't even have a specific public hearing date to identify at this point, so it'd be another option.
We could retable it at that time if we need to. Okay. So if you restate it to one month, then?
Would we like to have an amended motion?
All right, Mr. Chair, I would move that we table this item to July 14th to give staff time to examine if there are any impediments in the code that would prohibit a six-month tabling, and that we revisit it at that time for a potential additional five-month tabling.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask staff again to help us with our motion.
And Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the only thought with this motion, as you're proposing it, is when we do get to next month, you may want to hear a report from staff. So it may also make sense at this point to go ahead and reopen the public hearing so you can consider that information at that time.
Do we table it for revised?
Additional information, including, I guess, our report on timeliness at that point, and any other information that you'd like to have brought back to you.
Third time's a charm.
Okay. I move that this item be tabled to July 14th to, and that the public hearing be reopened so that staff can deliver a report on any impediments to further tabling. Is there anything else?
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. You've heard the motion, been moved and seconded. I think it's clear. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We appreciate the patience of the audience today. This hearing is getting a little long, but hopefully we can move right along. Okay, we will now take up, will now open the public hearing on item 202-108-100834-V-A-C, Patrick Sweeney. The public hearing is opened, and we'll hear from the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, now before you, we have application 202-100834-V-A-C for Patrick Sweeney. This is a variance in accessory use application for a detached accessory structure of 1,728 square feet to remain in the front yard of the property. The structure is currently used as an animal shelter and for personal storage. Property is located at 12811 South Cave Creek Lane in Kuna and contains five acres. As you'll see here on the screen, currently, this structure is located within the front yard of the property. The detached accessory structure was built without an approved building permit and without approval of an accessory use permit. Currently, the structure sits within the front yard of the property. Ada County Code limits the construction of accessory structures in the front yard. Now, the code states that the structure in the front yard shall not exceed 50% of the square footage of the footprint of the principally permitted dwelling or 1,500 square feet, whichever is less. The structure, as I said earlier, is being used for that animal shelter and personal storage. The variance application does not relieve an undue hardship due to the characteristics of the site. There are no physical characteristics or hazardous areas on the site that would prevent the structure from being built elsewhere on the property. Now, the property is not located within a hillside overlay or flood hazard overlay area. While the existing location of the primary dwelling may create difficulty in placing the accessory structure elsewhere on the property, the current dwelling placement is not considered a site characteristic. The applicant also has the option to reduce the size of the structure if they, you know, to meet that 50% standard. In addition to the need for the variance to relieve an undue hardship based on those physical characteristics, the variance shall not grant a right or special privilege that is not otherwise allowed in the base district. Approval of the variance would be granting the applicant a special right or privilege. These structures greater than 1,500 square feet are not permitted in the front yard for the properties in the RR zoning district. You'll see here the site is in that green RR district on your screen. Lastly, the variance must not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare based on comments received by various public agencies. The placement of the structure in the front yard would not be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. So they do meet that standard. But as you can see on your screen, staff is recommending denial because of failure to meet those other two standards. And based upon staff's review of the application, staff concludes this application does not comply with Ada County Code and recommends denial to the board as set out in the proposed findings effect. All standing for questions.
Thank you, Connor.
Are there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Connor, so can you tell us, it says it's an animal shelter. Is it a business, and do they have a permit?
Commissioner, can you note, it is not a commercial structure. It's just for their personal use of their personal animals for, I believe horses is what they're using it for.
They keep horses in it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any other questions for staff from the board?
Done with this.
One question? Okay, I thank you. Is the applicant here?
Applicant is online.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you fine.
Hi. Okay. When I bought the property, I talked to the neighbor that's been here for over 20 years, and he said, 10 acres in front of me, they did some work, and the draining is, there's some issue with draining down on the lower part where the road is. So I had to build my house up on the northwest location, as the ground slopes to the north, and then to the south. So then, so we built our house up on top, and then we got somebody to build a barn. When we contacted the person to build the barn for our horses, we told them we wanted permit it. Apparently, he did contact the county, and the inspector showed up during the construction of the barn. And then, once my house was done being built, my builder told me that the barn wasn't permitted. So I contacted the county, and they said my builder for the barn did contact them, but never got back to them. So I didn't have, no idea that it wasn't gonna be permitted, so then I went through the process. But the property to the south of me is a five-acre lot, the property to the west of me is a 10 acres, and north is 10 acres, and to the west is a 20 acre. There's other properties around here that actually have barns, and so Jerry, so I wouldn't be granting anything special for having this barn, and it's just for livestock, for our horses right now.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions. Does anyone on the commission have questions?
Mr. Chair, I have a quick question for staff. Connor, what's the difference between requirements code for animal shelter versus an ag structure?
Commissioner Kenyon, so how it would work with an ag structure is they would not need a building permit, they would just need the zoning certificate. They would still have to meet certain standards, setbacks, to get that zoning certificate. And really, with the ag structure, they have to have, it has to be an ag parcel, so they have to have the appraisal tax label of an ag parcel. I'm not aware if this structure, or I'm sorry, if this property is an ag parcel or not, but they would still have to meet certain code requirements, like setbacks for the ag structure.
So, Mr. Sweeney, do you know if your parcel is an ag parcel?
Hi, I did contact the county. They said I would have to show a profit of $1,000 for the first three years before I could get that as an ag.
Yeah, that's right, okay. Okay, thank you, I don't have any questions.
Okay. You, this is a barn for horses, correct?
Yes.
And you built it? When did you build it?
It was built about a year ago. The problem is, when we bought it, we told the guy we wanted permit it, but his engineering, he only had, he had the California, Nevada, Oregon stamp, he didn't have an Idaho stamp. So they had to go through the process to get their building engineer to get his Idaho stamp before he can get a certified structural stamp for Ada County.
Okay. We'll have a question for staff, then. If we deny this application, is the request that he remove the barn?
Commissioner Beck, yes, that would, essentially, the building is not in compliance with our code, and so therefore, you know, whatever steps would take place after that, yes, we would be requiring them to move the structure to a different location, or remove it from the property altogether, or knock off some square footage down to 1,172 square feet. Those are kinda his options as of now, and however, you know, the legal processes that that moving forward, I believe code enforcement would have to get involved, and there'd be some additional steps.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I thought you said that it could be up to 1,500 square feet.
Commissioner Kenyon, so it's 1,500 square feet or 50% of the footprint of the primary dwelling, it's whichever is less. Due to the size of the primary dwelling, it would have to be limited to 1,172 square feet for this structure. Currently, the structure is 1,728 square feet.
Yeah, so quite a bit off of it, okay. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney, did you contact your builder and let him know what the concerns or issues are with this? You might have recourse with your builder.
Yeah, no, I've contacted numerous times, he's stopped answering my calls, my text messages, and he just turns around and tells me, "I just told you the building, and you gotta contact whoever built it." I'm like, "No, you harped the person." So now I'm having issues with him to try to get everything resolved on the barn.
Okay.
One more question. Mr. Sweeney, did you realize at the time, you personally, what your square footage limitations were?
No, because actually, when we purchased the barn, we told him we wanted permit it. And that's when he said it didn't need to be permitted because it's an ag. And that's when I contacted the county, and they said it had to be, I had to do a $1,000 profit for the first three years. So I let him know, and he actually did contact the county, and the inspector showed up to inspect it and everything else, but he never got back to the county and never filed anything to get anything done. My home builder is the one who told me that it wasn't permitted.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, well, I just don't understand why we would put these type of limitations on a, what is it, a five-acre parcel?
Yes, sir.
I just don't, I don't get that.
Time to look at rewriting the code and give them your input.
Right. I don't think it's me that needs, I think it's Mr. Sweeney's to give them the input. Did you hear that, Mr. Sweeney? We're changing our zoning code, and maybe if your application is denied, you can participate in the rewriting of the code, because I just, somehow, some of these limitations, I just don't understand what the benefit to the community is on having a 1,200-square-foot barn, as opposed to a 1,500-square...
It was written 30 years ago.
I don't understand it, and I think it's incorrect. But anyway, is there anyone else like to provide testimony? Okay. With that, I will, anybody wants to ask questions of the staff before we close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering if, could he refile as an ag?
He's gotta show a profit of $1,000 for three years.
So you build an ag thing, then you try to get a profit for three years, and you file? That's the process?
Commissioner Davidson, I'm not totally sure of the appraisals process and how to get your parcel to become an ag parcel. You have to show that you are producing some sort of ag, you know, profit. I'm not totally sure if, you know, horses are under that ag use or not. I think we'd probably have to ask.
This is giving horse rides.
Yeah, probably have to ask legal on that one.
Well, I'm wondering, could you essentially give him three years to show he's made a profit and revisit it then?
No, that would be up to us, that's not up to staff.
But legal...
And then legal might, legal might give us the big snake eye, stink eye over there.
Well, let me direct that to legal.
Well, we'd have to go into executive session.
If the board wanted legal to look at that, he would pass that the board would table. Legal would have an opportunity to look at it. That is an option that the board was...
Well, let me put that to the applicant, Mr. Sweeney.
The, go ahead.
Is that something you'd be interested in trying to do, is turn a profit over the next three years and turn this into an ag property?
Well, that's my plan, because right now, I'm, I got, I imply I got water rights to irrigate. So right now, I'm starting to seed some grass, so I can eat cattle, so I can end up selling some cows, so eventually I can turn it into an ag property. But as prices of everything else, it's taking a little longer to get everything up and going. So I got an acre so far irrigated, and I'm happy to seed it, and the other half I'll seed this week. So that takes a while to grow, and then I got to be finching for it and everything.
Does, so question to staff, is selling livestock fall under the ag definition?
Commissioner Davidson, I do believe so, yes. And now, horses, I'm not totally sure on horses, once again, probably have to ask the legal on that one.
But cows, you are sure?
Yes, livestock, yes. Whether or not you're selling the cows itself, or the meat that comes from the cow, I don't know, but...
So you could sell one cow for a thousand bucks a year, and then you'd be under the statute theoretically?
We don't know, we don't know that.
Well, okay, I will, I'll move to table this to send the issue to legal, once we close the public hearing.
All right, we'll close the public hearing then.
Mr. Chairman, again, if you're gonna table for additional advice, it's perfectly acceptable to leave that public hearing open, so you can receive that advice.
All right, we'll leave it open. Go ahead, Dan.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move that we table...
Can we hold on one second? We don't wanna leave it open for anyone other than information we want from staff, and direction from staff, not for additional public testimony.
And Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Kenyon and Commissioners, yes, you could specify the information that you're looking for. You do not have to leave it open to essentially start over. Once the item's picked back up, you could specify what you're looking for and accept that back at the next hearing.
Add to that, I think part of the concern is the board might have additional questions from the applicant, like they did today, if there was in fact going to be that kind of proposal. Public hearing open would give the board that up.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Much pleasure, the board.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we table item number 202100834-V-A-C, Patrick Sweeney, to July 14th, to allow legal to investigate some of the questions of the board.
And I think too, also, we'll add to direct staff to find additional information from the assessor's office on the qualifications on the three years to make it an ag structure. And I'd second that.
And to direct staff to investigate...
Do what she said.
Yeah. How formal we have to be for the court record. That'll be my motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Does clerk have that clear? All right, it's been moved and seconded to table this till July 14th to allow...
What they said.
What they said, yeah. I get that. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Okay. We now have, for consideration, River Ridge Engineering, I will open the public hearing Well, staff can give us a report.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is Project 2006-00180-S with a C-HD. So this is a preliminary plat for Neville Ranch East. I need... Let me share that with you. Okay. So this is within the Cartwright Ranch planned community. It was originally approved in 2006. The applicant is River Ridge Engineering. So Cartwright Ranch has, was approved for 625 residences. There've been seven phases of Neville Ranch subdivision, completed with 452 residential community and commercial lots. Neville Ranch East, which is on the east side of Dry Creek Road, has 52 residential lots, and is on the eastern side of Cartwright Road. It's in compliance with the approved density. So this is the original conceptual development plan. It also says what type of residences they want in that area. So on Neville Ranch East, they are looking for traditional lots, but it also gives them the ability to have a minimum of 30% of the traditional, and they can have up to 90% of traditional. They can also have townhome, village, and some view lots within that area.
Dan, can you just specify what traditional means, size-wise, or what does that mean?
Traditional homes? I'd have to think what exactly those are. They have a little bit more density, so townhomes are higher density. The village lots have 2 to 10, and then the traditional lots are 2 to 10 also. They have a little different style for each of those types of homes. And in the original Cartwright Ranch, they do have some, they have different elements, so they show what type of designs, what type of homes are gonna be in each of those areas. So this is gonna be the Phase 1 of Cartwright Ranch. They're actually gonna have two phases, and I apologize, that's for Cartwright Ranch, for Neville Ranch East. They want to have two phases. So what we're gonna see tonight is the first phase, which is right in this area. So there is 52 residential lots and seven common lots. The common lots have been outlined in red, and then Lot 28, Block 1, will be a part of Phase 2. So staff and the P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval of this application with the conditions of approval. There's been no opposition submitted for this application, and I'll stand for any questions. We do have some conditions of approval, the key conditions of approval. They do have to work with the, they will have sewer from Hidden Springs, and their water is provided by Suez Water. The North Ada County Fire and Rescue has the jurisdiction for the fire. They have paid impact fees for a lot of these jurisdictions. They paid for the library. They're part of their... Their, part of their requirements were to support the fire, the police, the library, schools, so they have complied with all of that. And I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions from the Commission?
Yes, Dan, this is Cartwright Ranch. This is very close to Hidden Springs and Dry Creek in Avamore, correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, it is.
Thank you.
It's just to the south of Hidden Springs.
Okay. Any other questions of staff before we move on? Okay, no questions, thank you. Would the applicant like to give us a presentation?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Commission. My name's Deborah Nelson. I'm with Givens Persley, and my address is 601 West Bannock Street, here representing the applicant. And I've also got members of our development team here with me tonight that may be available to answer questions. Thanks so much to Diana and her work on this project, for her thorough analysis, and all of her assistance. We agree with the staff report that she's given you, and all of the conditions of approval that are before you. To start with an overview, if you wouldn't mind, the next slide, please. This preliminary plat application is a continuation of the Cartwright Ranch planned community. The planned community approval and the existing planned community zoning covers everything that is shown here on this slide. The first preliminary plat covered all of the west side of Cartwright Road. This preliminary plat before you tonight covers the western portion of the east side of Cartwright Road, approximately 17.5 acres. This east side preliminary plat is consistent with the Cartwright Ranch Development Plan and Comprehensive Plan, which is required for its approval. Those are the criteria that you must find. The Cartwright Ranch was approved with 620 residential lots, plus or minus 10%. With that range, that means the lots are to be in the 558 to 682 range. The 52 residential lots that are provided with this east side preliminary plat brings the overall development within that range, so that we are above the minimum and still below the maximum residential lots allowed. Next slide, please. You can see from the approved Cartwright Ranch land use map that this east side area has always been planned for residential development. And more specifically, you can see, and this is what Diana highlighted as well in her presentation, that both traditional lots and village lots were contemplated on the east side, which are the two residential lot types that we're proposing. Next slide, please. And you can see that here on the preliminary plat, with the village lots primarily in the center, and the traditional lots on the west, north, and east side. Of the 52 residential lots, 24 are traditional, 28 are village, all are detached, single-family homes. And in answer to your question, Commissioner Kenyon, about some of the differences between them, the traditional lots are a bit larger, they provide a nice transition between the smaller lots and the interior of the development and open space. They have the front-loaded homes in this development. They are in our dimensional standards and our zoning ordinance, a minimum of 6,000 square feet, and 100 by 60 in the lot size. The village lots are for rear-loaded homes, a little more similar to maybe the north end of Boise, where you've got pedestrian-friendly access and a tighter pedestrian-accessible neighborhood feel. The minimum lot size there is 3,200 with 80 by 40 as the minimum dimensions. The main access to the development is from Cartwright, onto Cartwright Road, from Neville Ranch Drive, a collector that runs through the development. We also have an emergency access provided out to Cartwright Road. All roads and access points have been approved by ACHD and by fire. Next slide, please. This slide illustrates how this east side preliminary plat integrates really nicely with the Phase 4 of Cartwright Ranch, directly across Cartwright Road, with aligned roadways and the Dry Creek Green Belt connection. Next slide, please. The east side will continue Cartwright Ranch's amazing trail and open space network. You can see the Dry Creek Green Belt pathway here in green that will be extended through the east side. And in red, you can see a new path that will connect all the way through the east side preliminary plat area and beyond, connecting up to Peggy's Trail. The east side also includes a small park near the entrance. Next slide, please. And zooming in just a little bit more, so you can see a little more of the details, in particular, the Green Belt pathway along Dry Creek, and this easy pedestrian connection to the core amenities in Cartwright Ranch that residents can enjoy just across the Cartwright Road and the pedestrian bridge over Dry Creek. Next slide, please. And here are those centralized amenities. The building on the right has a tot lot, swimming pool, and fitness center, which are currently open and being used by residents. The clubhouse in the center will open this fall with additional bocce ball, cornhole, and pickleball. The commercial space next door will also open this fall with over 6,000 square feet there. Next slide, please. Here's a closer image of that new commercial shopping area. Next slide. And a closer image of the fitness building, and if you wouldn't mind, just, yeah, you can see the pool here behind the fitness, and a few more. There's some interior images here of the fitness facilities for Cartwright Ranch residents. And then, I want to show you some examples of our homes, and this also will help illustrate the village versus the traditional lots. First here, I'm showing you some examples of the traditional lot homes. Next slide, please. And then, some examples of village lot homes. And final slide. We are really excited to bring in this next phase of Cartwright Ranch, consistent with the Cartwright Ranch planned community approvals. And I'll stand for any questions you guys have.
Are there any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, I, we have been having conversations with IDWR and DEQ for the past year, year and a half, on water quality and quantity. And there have been concerns voiced by IDWR that building, continuing to build and grow in the foothills is probably not wise, and I know that this was approved ahead of time, it's been approved. But I do notice in here that we require a letter from Suez stating that they have the capacity to provide that water. And I'm just wondering, since this is in the foothills and we have a drought or two, if we've got adequate water for fire suppression, and maybe Richard or staff can answer this question, does, is Suez working with the fire department, you know that, on not just water capacity that they think they have, but water capacity with Avamore growing and us approving, you know, Avamore, water's going up to Boise County now, we've got additional Dry Creek, so there's a lot of growth happening in this area that has very limited water resources. And so, I'm just going to, you know, inquire to staff or anyone else that can answer the question, are we coordinating and doing further studies or analysis with IDWR, DEQ, Suez, and the fire districts? Is everybody talking to make sure we do have adequate water supplies in these planned communities?
Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenyon, I'm happy to start the answer to your question. When the Cartwright Ranch was approved, they did work closely with all of the agencies that you're describing, including by adding additional capacity and tank storage for the water. Also, there is an existing main line in Cartwright Road that will force, that Suez controls to provide water here, and they have reviewed that and weighed in on this, that we have sufficient capacity. Obviously, we also have to have capacity for fire flows to build this, and so we do have to meet all of those standards, and we will.
But you're talking about infrastructure capacity, I'm talking about actual water.
Yes, and we have to, we have to meet the fire flow capacity as well. And so, and also, we have our engineer here, in case he has more details to add about that.
Okay, great.
I might invite him up to see, get the engineering answer to that.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Chairman and Commissioners, with River Ridge Engineering, I've actually done probably five of the phases so far on this, this will be the fifth. We did just construct another water tower at the top of Seaman's Gulch, right next to the one that was already there. They, we do work with all the Suez and the fire department. Actually, the city of Boise actually does a lot of the review for the Napa Meridian, or not Napa Meridian, but the fire district out at Cartwright Ranch. And they review our fire flows and ensure that Suez, and they work in tandem to make sure that the lots are served properly. And so, with that in mind, that, you know, with the extra tank that they, Cartwright provided, and the main line that comes down from Seaman's Gulch that was installed initially, we meet all those requirements for fire flow. And that's it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I have a question for staff, though, when we're finished, thank you.
I don't thank you. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Anything else for me?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify on this application? Hearing done. Do you have any questions for the staff?
I have one, yeah, just one question, and this would be for Richard. So, when we were talking to IDWR, DEQ, and they had done that analysis, M3 in Avamore and in Dry Creek and whatnot, did it encompass Cartwright area as well? Do you remember?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, I am not sure if that included Cartwright or not. I believe it did include M3 and Avamore, but I'm not sure if went down south in this area.
Okay. Do you know when they are going to finish with their update of that analysis?
I do not.
Okay. Right, that's all I have.
Okay. I would have a question for staff, if you know it. What is the access point? How do people that live here at Boise, if they want to go to Boise?
Mr. Chairman, they, they do drive Cartwright Ranch, and then, and I can't think of the name.
Pearson Boulevard?
No, what's? Pierce Park? They drive Pierce Park, and then they can actually come from Highway 55. There's a road that comes in that direction.
What road would that be? Do you know?
Doesn't Cartwright go out to 55?
Seaman's Gulch.
Okay, I don't have any more questions. So, before we, I guess, unless there's other, any other questions of staff or anyone else, before we close the public hearing, I will close the public hearing for discussion by, from the board. What's the, what's the pleasure of the board, or do you want to have further discussions?
Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make, make a motion, and I would make a motion to approve 200600180-S-HD, River Ridge Engineering, based on testimony here tonight, finding some fact conclusions of law. And I just would like to make note for the record, though, I'm anxiously anticipating some help from IDWR in their analysis of water quantity and qualities, especially in our planned communities moving forward, because they do express grave concerns, but we don't have data yet, but they should have a model finished by the end of the year that this board can then use to have more tools for decision-making. But I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve this.
Motion with concerns noted, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moving seconded to approve application 200600180-S-HD, River Ridge Engineering. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you much. Moving on. We next have for consideration, application 202100287-S, Donder Rose Ranch subdivision. I'll open the public hearing on that. We can get a staff report.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, project number 202100287-S is a preliminary plat for the Donder Rose Ranch subdivision, which consists of two residential lots. The property is located at 4090 South McDermott Road in Section 28 Township 3 North, Range 1 West. The property consists of 10 acres. The property is owned rural or in transition, and this, the rural or in transition district requires a minimum lot size of five acres and 250 feet of street frontage. Each lot will have five acres and has at least 250 feet of street frontage onto South McDermott Road. It should be noted, Lot 1, which is the lot that's to the north, has an existing residence on the property, and the proposed subdivision complies with the subdivision regulations in Chapter 8-6. The property is located in Meridian's area of impact, therefore, the Meridian Comprehensive Plan, as adopted by A.A. County, is the applicable comprehensive plan. The future land use map designates the property as rural estate residential, which is intended for both agricultural uses and single-family homes at densities of up to one unit per five acres. As both new lots will be five acres in size, the proposed subdivision is compatible with the adopted land use map. The A.A. County Highway District mentioned in Exhibit Number 34 that there are no improvements required to the adjacent street due to the fact that, that the development is generating less than 10 additional average daily trips, consistent with their policy, and the additional vehicle trips generated with this development is within the acceptable level of service of E. Staff finds that this application complies with the A.A. County Code and recommends approval to the board, and the Plains and Zoning Commission voted at their April 15th, 2021, public hearing to recommend approval of this application to the board as well, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions from the Commission to the staff?
Just clarification that Ingress and Aggress will be off of McDermott Road.
That is correct.
Thanks, that's all I have.
Any questions? I have a question. What's footprint maximum or minimum?
This is going to be a 5% lot coverage, so...
5% of the lot?
Yep, so 5% of the lot can have structures on them.
It fits within that. It's less than 5%.
So, to build a big house and come back later, they couldn't, they can't build a barn?
That's correct. So, with Lot 2, so Lot 2 doesn't have a house, so hopefully the applicant's aware of this, and they'll plan accordingly. And then, with the other structures that's on Lot 1, they comply with the lot coverage currently.
I hope we can alter that 5%. I think it's just a little ridiculous, actually. Five-acre lot.
Sure, Richard's taken note of that a few times. Note to staff.
Okay, well, that's, any, any questions from staff? Do we have any, do we have an applicant here to, okay?
The applicant is online.
Okay. And, go ahead. Sir, what's the name?
I'm not sure who's testifying as the applicant. I have Kendra or Les.
I think it's going to be Kendra.
Okay, Kendra.
This is Kendra Taylor.
Hello, Kendra Taylor.
Are you able to hear me just fine?
I can hear you just fine.
Okay, well, good evening. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for your time. My name is Kendra Taylor, and I'm actually the daughter of Les and Donna Smogar, who are the applicants. I am the acting representative of the application. I am also the one who would be developing the property once we have it divided. Just a little history, as our drive continues. My husband recently retired from the military. Just a little history, as our drive continues, my husband recently retired from the military. He has a job with the government again, but not with the military, relocating back to Idaho. So we have decided to move forward and develop our family estate, build our last home, I guess our forever home, but mainly to be closer to my parents, who currently own the property, to not only help them out with the property as they get older, but to take care of them as well, and to continue farming the property. And I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions of the applicant?
No, but you sound like a really good daughter.
Yeah, any, any daughter that wants to take care of her parents is a good daughter.
That's right.
I would agree. Any questions? Is there anyone else would like to provide testimony before we close the public hearing?
I have Leslie online, if she would like to testify.
Okay, Leslie? Is Leslie online?
I'm not sure if he is or not, that is my father.
I don't hear him.
Okay, well, they're hopefully watching.
Okay.
I'll refrain from making any boomer jokes, so.
Please do. Please do, okay. Well, I think without further testimony and without further questions of staff, we'll close this public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm going to move to approve application number 202100287-S, Donder Rose Ranch subdivision, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report, and based on the testimony that we heard here tonight.
And I'll second that. Been moved and seconded to approve 202100287-S, Donder Ranch, Rose Ranch subdivision. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Aye. Thank you, moving along. Last one? The last one we have up for discussion, 202100595-ZC-DA-CU-MSP. I will open the public hearing. Can we have a report from the staff?
ordinance map amendment to rezone approximately 2.16 acres from the estate residential district to the airport industrial district, along with a development agreement, and also a conditional use application and a master site plan application for a contractor's yard and shop. The property is located at 4301 South Banner Street, Section 30, Township 3 North, Range 2 East, and consists of approximately 2.16 acres. The zoning ordinance map amendment will rezone the property from the estate residential district to the airport industrial district, and you can kind of see on the map here, on the east side, on Gowan Road, we have a lot of properties that are already zoned M3, and then the property across the street is zoned M3, and we have properties to the north and also to the south that are zoned M3 as well. The contractor's yard will consist of a 7,000-square-foot shop and storage building, as well as two additional 5,000-square-foot shops and storage buildings. The total square footage of the new shops on the property is 17,500 square feet. In addition, the applicant will convert the existing 1,538-square-foot, single-family dwelling on the property into an office, and the project will be developed into three phases. So the first phase will be the 7,500-square-foot shop, and then the conversion of the single-family dwelling into office space, and then each additional phase will be a 5,000-square-foot shop. The contractor's yard and shop will generally operate five days a week, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and there'll be a total of ten employees, with the number of employees working during the largest shift on-site is five, with the remainder of the employees working off-site. The property is located in the Boise Air Terminal Airport Influence Areas Overlay District, and is an airport influence area C, and the purpose of the Boise Air Terminal Influence Areas Overlay District is to promote the public health, safety, and welfare by limiting and/or placing additional restriction on land use activities close to the airport. A contractor's yard and shop is a principally permitted use in the airport industrial district. Subsection 8-3A-3A3 requires for any principally permitted use within airport influence area C to apply for a conditional use, except for agriculture and non-necessary off-premise signs. Therefore, the applicant has made an application for a conditional use, along with a master site plan. Per A.A. County Highway District requirements, the applicant will construct Banner Street abutting the site as half of a 40-foot-wide industrial street section with pavement widening, vertical curb and gutter, and a five-foot-wide attached concrete sidewalk to extend to the north and south property lines. Staff finds that this application complies with the A.A. County Code and recommends approval to the board. The Plains and Zoning Commission, at their April 15, 2021 public hearing, voted to recommend approval of this application to the board, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions of staff?
Is there any testimony against the proposal?
There was not, so at the Plains and Zoning Commission, it was just the applicant who had testified.
And can you go over the airport overlay requirements one more time?
Sure. So the airport overlay district basically consists of four different influence areas. So basically, the airport, Boise Airport Influence Area is basically the area surrounding the Boise Airport. So the area that's closest to the airport runways is influence area C, and in influence area C, the requirements are basically any principally permitted use within influence area C has to go through a conditional use application process. And so typically, if this was outside influence area C, this would have just required a master site plan in addition to the zoning ordinance amendment, but because it's in influence area C, it has that additional requirement of having to go through the conditional use process.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other, is there anybody who wants to talk online?
The applicant is online.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, John Brecken, Brecken Land Design, 6661 North Lindwood Street. I, thank you, Brent, that was very thorough presentation. I don't have much to add, other than we plan to also connect to City Sewer and Water Services to the south. One of the properties further to the south that recently improved had extended sewer and water to that point, so we would like to also extend it up and connect this property to those as well. Beyond that, I believe we're meeting all the requirements, and I'll stand for questions.
Are there any questions?
No, sir.
Any questions?
What's the noise like at the site from the airport?
I, I'm not sure about that, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. We are at the one end of the, oh, would that be west end, west end of the runway, and so I believe that the planes regularly fly overhead through this area, and is one of the reasons many of these properties in this neighborhood have redeveloped or been improved in recent years as contractor facilities. Specific noise level, I'm not quite clear what that might be.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, I don't have any, any questions, unless anyone else does.
No, I'm good, thank you, John.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I find that the application complies with code, and so if we're ready, I would make a motion to approve the application.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
I haven't made it yet.
Oh, yeah, make it.
I'm just saying, if, if there's no further discussion, I'm ready to.
Discussion.
No further discussion.
Good then, okay. All right then, I'm moved to approve application number 202100595-ZCDACUMSP, based on findings of fact of law and conclusions contained in our staff report, testimony heard here tonight.
Okay. Is there a second to that one?
I'll second that, even though you're a vandal.
Even the what?
He's a vandal.
Yeah. No vandals.
Oh, you got two vandals in the room, huh?
Well, I'm one of each, I'm a broad, I'm a vandal.
Thank you, thank you. You've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's see, do we have another cell tower up here we can talk about?
Thank you, sir, good luck with your business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think with that, we are in recess.